All right, we will call this special meeting to order. Please note that this is a special meeting scheduled to review and discuss some of the city's current funding sources and allocations. The public is welcome and encouraged to participate both in person and virtually. Yeah. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California a result of the threat of COVID-19. While the governor issued executive orders N-0721, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. The public health and well-being are the top priority of the city, and you're urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality in the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, question and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions and answers portion of the app and be sure to state the item you'll be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
All right, please stand for the pledge, and I've asked Councilmember Esmondola to lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one item on the agenda tonight, which is the homeless workshop. And I'm going to give some background on this, so why we're having this and what the process is going to be. I think I can safely say this on behalf of all five of us, there's two questions that we are commonly posed with, and they are, what are you doing about the homeless? And the second one is, what are you doing about the homeless? And they're exactly the same question, but they have two completely different meanings. We have an issue in our city that is not an isolated incident. It is a state problem, a county problem, a national problem. And tonight, we are going to hear from our city and our departments exactly, you know, how this issue is impacting our city and at what levels we are engaging to try to resolve the issues that we are collectively together facing. This is supposed to be an informative workshop this evening. The discussion for the workshop will be limited during the presentation between the presenters and the council, as this is a workshop. If you have any questions, we will circle back at the end of the meeting for public comment and questions, and they will be directed to the council and the chair. Okay? The way the process is going to work is this is not just a one and done. This is going to be a series of at least three meetings is what the intent is, because there's a lot of good things that are going on in our community to try to address the issues that are facing us. And this first one is to really get real with ourselves at the city level, because I've heard comments, and I'm sure my colleagues have as well, as far as, you know, the city's not engaging in helping with the issue, we're not putting resources towards the issues. And I will tell you now, as one of five, my eyes have been opened over the past three years with everything that has gone on and how our city is dealing with the issues that face all of our residents here. And the second meeting, we hope to bring in the county, and thank you Supervisor Baines for being here tonight, as well as Sheriff Barnes, because we want to find out how we're engaging on this issue. And then the second meeting is to bring together how the county is engaging and facing the issues, to find out where we overlap, to where we can find some synergy, to where we know where we can put our best foot forward to get the most traction. The third and final meeting that I'm hoping that we have would be to bring in what I call third-party partners. And that's not just, you know, what we traditionally think of with the consortium and Hands of Hope and Habitat, but the partners in the community. There are churches that are running meal services. There's businesses that are impacted by the problems that we have. We've really reached, I think, a time in history to where we have to face this not only head-on, but collectively. And the intent out of the three meetings is not to say, hey, the city's not doing this, or the county's not doing that, or you're not doing this, and you're not doing that, is to come together collectively and find where we overlap, where we really can have the greatest impact, because it's great to do things one day. And I'll go back to, you know, the great effort that we all did, and I have no regrets of it. The city team led us, and the council joined, and we got out and helped clean up our community here back in the fall. It needed to be done. Thrilled to be a part of it. But that's a flash in the pan. We need to really start looking at this with some long-term jointly collectively thought-through processes to where we pull everybody together. And there's a lot of great things going on. I'm not trying to undermine anyone for anything that they're doing. There's a lot of great things, but we really need to see where we can find those common areas and really accelerate the impact that we can have on our community dealing with these issues. So tonight, we will be issue-focused. We will be looking at some things that I've asked myself to be presented real. For too often, you know, we have heard terms as, you know, homeless and compassion and these things, and oftentimes, we want to smooth things over, you know? The old adage, you know, medicine goes down with a spoonful of sugar. We want to sweeten it up and make it okay. I will apologize now if some of these photos that you will see tonight may offend you, but it's time to get real, people. It really is. So if something is shown on the screen and you need to excuse yourself, by all means, please do. The intent is not to offend anyone. The intent is to bring forward the information in a very professional, accurate, and transparent way so that we can build upon tonight when we link up with the county, and then we link up with the third-party partners. So that is where we're looking to go, and that is why we called this. And I want to thank all of you for showing up tonight, because this is a huge topic for our community. So with that, unless Ms. Langley, do you have any opening comments yourself? We're going to go straight into the program, and we want to hear from Officer Kosky with our police department.
My name is Troy Kosky, and I've been in law enforcement since 1990, the last seven years at Uba City Police Department. In January 2020, I took over as a full-time homeless lawyer as an officer for the police department. The city saw the need to have someone help out with the homeless population and to help enforce laws and rights of the businesses and citizens of the city. The three ways that I tried to do this is by using outreach, education, and enforcement. Several topics that I'm going to talk about tonight: the homeless, some legal issues, outreach, which there's several different partners in outreach, education, and enforcement. How many homeless do we have in Uba City? Well, the point-in-time count is for Sutter County. In 2019, the point-in-time count was 519 unsheltered in Sutter County. I typically deal with about 75 different homeless people that sleep in the business doorways and in the streets of Uba City. We have mainly two different types of homeless population in Sutter County. We have those that live in the river bottoms and outline areas. These are folks that have the ability to build structures, they'll get trailers, they're very, and have great ways to help themselves. They'll pull water from the river like this person that has a washing machine. They get beds, water systems, cooking. The main thing I'm going to talk about tonight is the folks that are in Uba City, the ones that we see on a regular daily basis. They're the ones that create most of our calls for service. They don't have the ability to do many of the things that the folks that live out in the outline areas are. They just find a place to lay, and that's where it is. Some of the common things of the homeless in Uba City, they'll typically stay in their own area, and they know where they can do certain things there. It's where they feel safe. If you see them, they're always pushing their cart, because they're afraid to leave their belongings and someone will steal it or go through it, which creates a huge mess, and then they will just leave it. One of the reasons that they stay in that same area is they know how to get food, money, and where to sleep. Some of the other things is they don't have the physical ability to move around, so they don't travel too far from where they are. Many of them can't plan for tomorrow. It's mainly about survival for today. Some of them, it's even hour-to-hour. Some of them have the clothes on their back, some of them will hoard, they have many different shopping carts full of possessions. A lot of it's just trash that they have, because they feel they may need it at some They don't shower or wash their clothes regularly. Some of them, for months, I've seen folks that haven't showered in months. The main theme is that they have minor to severe chronic mental health issues or dependency and choose on drug and alcohol. The outreach, we have the advocates, the Hart team, and the street nurses. And then we have the folks that provide housing needs. Hands of Hope, Better Way, Harmony Village. Right now, we have an overnight camping area that kind of doubles as an RV camping area as well on Second Street. The Hart team, currently, Uba Sutter Mental Health provides one intervention counselor for both counties. She provides her time, divides that time between all the different agencies. I get to go out with Emily one day a week, but we typically have phone contact trying to strategize on how we're doing with certain clients, trying to get them into housing the quickest and easiest way possible. As of September of 2021, we have housed 12 people from the Uba City streets. Although this may seem like a small number, it's a lot of hours and contacts to get someone to the point where they're ready for assistance. Some of these people, it's taken over a year. Some people, actually, some that we just got housed here a couple of weeks ago, was two years before they were ready and we had a spot. Once they're ready, that's the next hurdle, is to find an open bed for them. We don't have too many open beds. Education, I provide education to the homeless and businesses. For the homeless people, I try to get them to clean up out of themselves. One of the main things that I carry now in my patrol car is trash bags. I'll ask them, if they're asked to move along, just move along without getting hostile or upset at the person because they've been asked to move. Try to explain to them that folks are trying to do business or keep their areas clean, and it's a daily thing for them. I try to give them information on where they can get alcohol and drug addiction services. And then I'll always provide them the outreach to go to Hands of Hope, which is our coordinated entry, where they can sign up for all the different services that are available to And for the businesses and the property owners, it's, I try to talk to them about landscaping, trying to keep the landscaping cleaned, putting out signs for no trespassing and no parking, motion activated lights if they can. And I try to get them to remove the camping debris as soon as possible. If it's not removed, another person will come in and rehabilitate that camp, or they will merely just tear through everything that's there to see what they can use. And these are where we see our large messes, because it's somebody that has either left it, and then someone else has come along and gotten into it. And they'll just flat leave it. When they're done, or they can't carry it anymore, they'll leave it where it lays. And I know it's a tough thing for businesses, they always say, well, that's not our problem. We didn't bring the homeless here. And that's one of the things that we're trying to do, is partner with them to try and get it all cleaned up as soon as possible. To lock the dumpsters helps avoid all of the stuff being pulled out of the dumpsters, or lock the dumpster access, if they actually have a little cubby with the dumpster. Try and lock it up. One of the recent successes we had was behind 971 Gray, they had a chain-link fence. Actually, they didn't have anything, and I told them, put up a fence, but don't do chain-link. Within three days, a chain-link was torn down. Now they have a nice wrought iron fence, and the people have, it's basically kept them from getting back there. The other thing that the homeless will look for in places they want to stay is water and electrical outlets. Try to get them to either lock those or shut them off, and then restrict Wi-Fi access. If a homeless person can find an outlet and Wi-Fi, they're home free. They're loving it. And again, the vehicles, if someone is there that's camping, or they have abandoned vehicles, to mark them right away. There are certain things that they have to do to remove those vehicles from their private property, and marking it is the first step. The enforcement.
Troy, forgive me. They might not know what you mean by marking it.
So marking is, they'll put a sticker on it typically that says that your vehicle needs to be moved or will be towed. And then the legal things, they have to have signage out, again, one of the things for the signs. There's legal things, it has to be a certain size and marked in a certain location. The enforcement end, we do have some legal issues that we have to be aware of. The Martin v. Boise decision basically said it's not illegal to be homeless. And this is talking about private, or I'm sorry, public property, mostly. So within the city, I guess for us, a lot of our areas are private. Although that case law doesn't pertain to us directly, we're still aware of it, and we don't want to go too far and trample all over that. The other is the more recent settlement was a lawsuit against Chico. I think if everyone's unaware of that, they've made an agreement to keep it from going to an actual judgment, and they've agreed to many, many different things for the homeless up there. They've got to provide structures for them, they have to provide them food, transportation to services if they want, reasonable amount of pets, a dog run, bicycle parking, bathing facilities. They've agreed to all this. It's going to be millions of dollars, and that was to keep them from having an actual judgment against them. So again, those are things that we have to be aware of, because truly, we are not trying to make it illegal to be homeless. What I try to do is try to make sure the homeless understand that the businesses and citizens have rights as well, and those are the laws that I enforce. We have several penal codes and municipal codes that I use to enforce those laws to protect the rights of our citizens and businesses. The trespass on business that's open to public is actually very difficult to prove. We have to prove that the homeless person had the intent to disrupt that business before I can make an arrest. A lot of the other sections also have to deal with places that are not open to the public, so it makes it a little bit more difficult. We also have a nudity, but that for the current penal code, it has to be sexual in nature. You have to prove that it was a sexual in nature crime while they were out there being nude. The city municipal codes, the main one that I use is the camping on private property. We also have camping on public property, and we have to be aware of the different legal issues with that. Also, the one that we go after is the shopping cart possession, possession of the shopping The, this is the trespass authorization form. This is one of the things that I need to get the businesses to sign, so that I can, there basically says that they're requesting the police department to keep unwanted persons off their property. This is good for six months, after a meeting with the district attorney, trying to determine the best course of action for us to prosecute those folks that are not wanting to move along. This is one of the things that we've come up with. This keeps us from having to contact the business owner or the private property owner in the middle of the night. This is on file with the police department for six months, and that way, every officer knows that they've asked us to keep people off of their property. If they are not there for business, then we can use this to move them along. Today, we have 162 businesses that have signed our trespass authorization form. Again, so once we give this, once we get the form signed, then we start giving out a 30-day admonishment. We'll tell the people that are camping on the property that they have to leave, and if they return after, within 30 days, we can use that to cite them for camping and/or trespassing. Again, for the current trespassing laws, we have to provide all that specific intent crime. And then for the, once I do start arresting people, they're cited and released right now, and a lot of people do not go to court, so I arrest them multiple times on their failure to appear in court. They just don't care about any of the consequences at this point. Again, which is due to their severe mental health and drug addiction. It just, it just doesn't matter to them, because they can't foreshadow their living Or I also use the drug and alcohol arrest. I have zero tolerance for drugs, which they all use, I can't say all, most of them are using some form of drug or alcohol. And if they're using out in public, or if they have possession, I will place them in an arrest. Again, I think this is one of those things that I can use to help force them to get help. At some point, enough will be enough, and they'll seek help. Property abatement. The, a lot of these folks do have large encampments. Most of them seem to be in the outline areas. A property abatement form is given, and we usually will give them multiple, multiple contacts and try to get them involved in services, try to get them into housing. And then once we give them an abatement form, it's 72 hours prior to us making more contact. Usually, it's a week. And again, when we go out to, if we have to remove property, we'll continue to give them that outreach. We do make sure that there's a bed available somewhere before we do an abatement. Our most recent abatement project was on the east side of the Feather River, along our sewer ponds. There are a lot of people in moving parts into an abatement that large. That was an encampment that's been on that side of the river for over 10 years. Deputy Lacon with the Sheriff's Department and I, and Eric Ball, started going over there, and Emily from Hart went over there and started making our outreach. And then we started coordinating and getting all the players in position to go out and actually remove the property. After three weeks, 5,000 man-hours, we removed 700 cubic yards of debris, debris, and approximately 103 vehicles, RVs, travel trailers, and motorcycles, that was along about a half-mile stretch of the river, right on the bluff. And that is, all that debris would have been washed into the river at some point, at the Some before and after, these are on Union Pacific railroad property. Union Pacific requested that we arrest this person for trespassing on their property, and we arrested him. He still wouldn't move, so they came in and abated the property, since it was their property. This is another one that was on the north end of town, the north end of Feather River Again, a lot of the camps that are in the river bottoms, we actually have a lot of property that was shared with Sutter County, come to find out. These are just some before and afters. I know Eric's going to have many more of those for you. Some of the figures for my time and hours in to clean up some of these projects, 25 hours, 10 hours, 80 hours, 100 hours, that's the one that we just did on the other side of the river. Kmart was another one, I think a lot of people saw. That was seven hours of my time, plus Sutter County's time of going in and baiting and cleaning up. I think a lot of people saw the Home Depot also. Some things that are upcoming, some things that we're hoping to improve on, to improve our successes, to increase mental health and drug addiction services. The assistance here needs to be immediate. So when we have someone that's ready, we need it to be immediate. We need to be able to call somebody and say, we've got somebody that's ready to go. Can you come and get them? Do we have a bed? There's many folks out there that say, yes, I'm ready, and when we call to get a bed, well, we don't have one right now, or it's going to take three days. We've got to do the test and get the paperwork done. Hopefully, we can try to streamline that. There's a lot of things that we're talking about in our meetings to move forward with I think another one of the things that we need is, a lot of these people, I believe, fit the criteria for being gravely disabled. They don't have the ability to provide for themselves. Like I said, many of them don't change their clothes for months at a time. And I know that's a tough decision right now, deciding whether or not it's the drugs that have created the mental health, or is it the mental health that's created the drug addiction? I think we need to figure that out. And the municipal codes, like I said, the trespassing is a specific intent crime. I've written a couple different additions to the municipal code that I like to get. Trespassing, which removes the specific intent, says, once you've been asked not to be on someone's property and you return, you can be arrested. This is going to give the citizens and the business owners and me more leeway to make those arrests, to move those people along. The other is the nudity. Most of the, not most, but a lot of the nudity that we have right now is not sexual in nature. It's just that they're walking around nude, because that's what they feel they can do. So the one that I've written removes that specific intent that's in a sexual nature. And I have met with the attorney, we do have a first draft written, so hopefully, that'll be coming along soon. Work with the district attorney's office to increase the consequences for these folks that are being arrested for the same thing, and then also for not going to court. A lot of these things, they just get bundled up, and then they plead them down. We are trying to establish a homeless court, so that we can not overburden the actual courts when we're ready to do the enforcement. I would like to see things like that they have to work with cleanup, like with Salove, that they have to get a photo ID, and they have to have signed up for the Hands of Hope or one of the coordinated entries, and then that ticket can be signed off, and we'll waive those charges. And we're working right now, trying to create an RV and overnight parking area. We've kind of got a temporary thing set up, but I think we're looking for a more permanent location for that. And then Lieutenant Thornton is going to step up and provide some actual, more specific stats on my position.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Thornton with the Uba City Police Department. Part of my duties is to oversee Troy. I I look at it as not overseeing, it's more of a partner and he's teaching me a lot. My job tonight is to kind of bring some figures into what we're really talking about here. You're going to see a lot of figures with some big numbers. At least they look big to me. Couple important points, one, to derive these numbers, I took the average officer at our department, about a nine-year officer making average wage, not a lot of, had partial education, nothing else. So he's not at the top of our pay scale. And then I added in 50% for benefits. So that's kind of how I got to these numbers. The numbers you're seeing, the way our system is designed, we can't just plug in, I want all the transient calls. It gives me every call that's related to a transient. You put transient in ours, it's the calls that are, hey, we got transits out front, can you move them along? Can, they're bugging us or I got to work today and they're in the doorway, they won't move, so we have to go out and deal with them. On average, that's a two-person call for us. I averaged it down to about a 30-minute call, which is really low. We're probably pushing close to an hour for those average calls. What you don't see in these figures are, uh, I've got a fight out in front of AMPM and we get there and it's transient, it's fighting or they're fighting with another citizen or somebody, they're coming in stealing, they're drunk. Cause we, they get categorized something different in our system and to get those true numbers, it would probably take me about six months just to sit down and go through every call that we've had to see if it's transient related. Let's kind of keep that in mind when you see these numbers. I just went through all that. Sorry, I, I don't do PowerPoint very well. For the year 2020, our department averaged 46,742 calls for service. Out of that, 2,721 were transient calls. That accounted for approximately 5.8%. Just the hourly cost for that half hour's work was $179,000. In 2021, our annual number of calls for our department was 49,888. Transient-related calls were 3,870 for 7.7% of our day, of our yearly calls to a total cost of 255,000. In the last six months, the department has responded to 24,547 calls for service. 2,000, excuse me, 2,096 were transient calls with an, for an 8.5% of our call, call volume with a total cost of 138,336 dollars. Year to date from January, year to date would be February 28th is when I stopped this. The department has responded to 706, 7,666 calls for service with 691 being just transient-related for a 9% of our call volume. For an estimated cost of $45,606. That's a projected for the year 2022 of being 45,960 total calls for service with 4,146 being transient-related for a cost of $273,000. Also, keep in mind, this doesn't include any of the abatement stuff that Troy talked about. This is just strictly two officers going out and handling a very basic call for service. Now, if we start making arrests, anything that has an arrest with it, normally we have to take them over to the hospital for a clearance. So you're adding hours onto a call. We were pretty conservative by going, we're just doing a half hour deal in here. With that, that's our presentation. I don't know who's next.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next presenter, does the council have any questions for our police department? Vice Mayor, go right ahead. Oh, Councilmember Mungar, you're up.
Thank you for yielding. For either one of you, great presentation. Thank you for the information. It's always good to see little figures to, to what we know. I think it's important to acknowledge, you know, this is, this is like a war and the strategies that we, we're losing battles, but hopefully we can change our strategy and begin to, to, to really get after this. I have a couple of quick questions. DA, you made comment that enforcement and consequences, can you elaborate on that a little bit more for me? What, what would that look like? What is it that, that again, as we sit up here as a city council, that we may be able to facilitate or help for you?
I think that's especially with the, the recent COVID issues that we're, we went through and still going through. I think that may have, may be causing a lot of the, uh, the reasons why these folks don't get jail time. I, again, I don't, the consequences need to be more severe for them to change their ways. At this point, I just continue to arrest them and there doesn't seem to be much punishment for that.
And that's, that's part of the establishment of the homeless court, I assume, is that the, and there would be something within the legal realm and humanly, that we would be able to redirect their, them to go do something in support of something good. Is there anything that you know that's barring us from doing that?
I don't think there's anything barring us.
Other than you don't have enough time because you're busy doing, I get all that.
Yeah, I don't do anything. So, um, but they, when I met with Cameron King and the misdemeanor DAs, uh, they were all for a homeless court when I did meet with them. Again, it's, it's just a matter of getting that set up and that is going to take some time. But I think aside from if, if we're not able to put these folks in jail for a certain amount of time, because they don't, they don't want to go to jail, they're going to dry out and they're going to not have their drugs and things like that. But having them have to go out and clean up and then also start making those steps to getting closer to realizing they need help, kind of like a fix-it ticket. If you get a ticket for a headlight out, you can go get the headlight fixed and it can get, be signed off. And that's what we want to see is in some way move them forward through that enforcement. I don't believe that enforcement alone or putting them in jail is going to fix their problems.
As far as, again, I was, the number of, of businesses that have signed up for the trespass, the 162. If you had to take a guess, how many do you think you should have? And, and the reason I say that is, again, this is something that perhaps, again, while you're dealing with what's going on, where the river meets the road, maybe this is something that some of us can take on. I know, um, the chamber would probably be interested in that. I, I don't want to speak for them, but I see Marty nodding. How many, how many should be? And I'm sure you're doing outreach already, but we could, we could probably help.
We, I think right now, because we have all officers, I do briefing training with our, each officer. And it, it shift changed so that everyone's kept up on, um, what's going on and kind of the direction that we're trying to go with the trespass letters and everyone's right. Which I think, looking at our numbers, that is one of the main reasons that our calls for service increased. Because of the, all the outreach indication, education that we're doing with the businesses, they are calling more. Because they realize that, hey, okay, they're here to help. And then we tell them, you need to call us before it gets bad. Once you see somebody sleeping out there with a sleeping bag, call us right away. So they don't end up having four parks full of stuff. That's one of the things that we've had the increased calls for service. Right now, I think we've got a pretty good saturation of the businesses. I, I guess that would be part of the outreach that I like to see with the businesses is to partner with them like we did on that, that cleanup day. Kind of go take that a step further and get some of that cleanup partnership going and then also talk to them more about getting trespass letters. Everyone would be outstanding and we would have everything saturated.
More calls though.
At some point. The more we have those, we keep them on file. These are patrol guys at night when they come across them and they know, hey, we have a trespass agreement signed. We don't have to wake them up at three in the morning or wait for them to come into work. We can move them along. We look at it as a tool, the more I can, pressure I can put on them that you can't be doing what you're doing, let's teach you where to help. And to get away.
Ordered entry in all of them, yeah.
To start getting them into those help. Cause right now, a lot of them, they don't realize they need help. And so they just, well, this is just what I do, this is how I live and, and I don't need help. They don't see the bigger picture in their own lives and what's going on.
Only a couple more.
One more other thing that, that we're working on is we're trying to put together a spreadsheet. One of the trespassing sections says, if you've been convicted of a crime on a particular property, you're not allowed to be on that property. For misdemeanors, two years, felony is five years, violent felony is forever. So we're in the process of getting that database going. One of our volunteers is cross-referencing our arrests with convictions from SutterCounty.org. And then she's putting that into a spreadsheet and officers are starting to give those notices. It's much like a restraining order. It's a slow process, but it's, it's something that we're working towards. So that the folks that again, just are not understanding, they can't be in certain places, another thing that we're working on.
Okay. Just curious on this one, how many, um, people do you think flow from the river bottoms? I used to call that River View Estates when I was doing the fire service stuff. How many do you think are flowing from, you know, their semi-permanent housing into the city in the evening time, which create, is creating some of the burden? I mean, are they, are the folks that are river bottom people generally staying in the river bottoms? Or are they some of the, the people that might be coming into town and, and challenging law enforcement?
I think the, the folks that live in the river bottoms, the ones that have built structures there, they'll come into town to get their supplies. They'll come in to steal. Most recently, we found a lot of stolen property on our side of the river, south of Shanghai Bend. Down to stolen John Deere tractors from Riverbend, uh, Riverbend School down there. We found, and we found, uh, one from Sierra Gold Nurseries. We found five stolen boats. I think it was four quad runners. So they're, they're responsible for a lot of the theft. They're coming in at night and that's the kind of havoc that they're wreaking on the city and also in Sutter County areas. But they don't typically come in and sleep in the doorway. So they're not the homeless that we're seeing in the doorways. They come in and, and wreak that havoc and, and then go back to their houses.
Okay, and last one, thanks for your patience. You talked about working with the businesses and I'll call these things attractive nuisances. You know, um, I'm not going to name the business, but they have a bunch of tanks out on the side, which becomes habitat. There's another place in town where there's large span of oleanders, which I know from my own experience. Is that the kind of supporter ordinance stuff, support that you're looking for us? I mean, I, I certainly don't want to, you know, lay the ground bare, but at the same time, it's an attractive place for people to go hide out. And if, is that something, is that what you're talking about when?
Absolutely. Yeah, the, um, and in that area where you're talking about, like behind Alta, that property manager, um, she manages about 15 different properties up and down state. If you go to her property where Alta is, Sportsman Warehouse, Michaels, she keeps her landscaping very nice and neat and tight. She trims it up, it takes away a lot of that hidey, hidey spots. They like to hang out behind her building, but she's up on contacting me, has her maintenance person contact me. She's always the first one to get me the trespass form. As they do expire after six months, she's, she's contacted me often. That's what we're looking for is trying to be that partner with them. Cause obviously the city and the police department can't do it all, but we want to work with them to try and make their businesses thrive.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Um, gentlemen, thank you for the, the informative presentation. The, um, the river bottoms, we're talking about the property between the Fishery Bridge and Shanghai Bend. It's my understanding within the last year, uh, that area received is either federal or state designation as a park. Now, with, with the, the funding, potential grant funding that comes with that, how would that change the way it looks right now?
As far as our ability to force laws down there. So, um, that, that's definitely going to help, like with some of the areas that we have in the city that are parks. We work with the, uh, the Public Works Department and the Parks and Rec to put up the signage for parks. Cause that opens up different municipal sections that I can use. The no smoking, the no camping, no drinking. So those all help. The more tools that I have, the more I'm going to be able to do instead of just asking someone, hey, can you leave please? Cause if they're in public during the day, there's not much I can do. And, but if they're violating one of those laws, then I can cite them or arrest them depending on if it's an infraction or misdemeanor. And Eric will talk a little bit more about the, the cleanup that we have been doing along the river with the grant that they obtained this last year. We're working closely with, again, like Sutter County and, and the fishing game, wildlife. And Andre was down there today, uh, making notifications and we're trying to move up through that area. They have different laws and things, they can actually trespass someone for a year. So we're, the partnerships that we have are just working outstanding with all the different names that you saw in that. It ran so smooth, we actually got done two weeks ahead of what we thought it was going to be. Cause everyone worked, it was no, all hands on deck.
With the time that you've spent down there, I've noticed that there's, there's several large trash containers. I think one's typically parked over there by Whittaker Hall and another one further downstream. Do the folks that live down there even use those?
Those are not for those folks. Unfortunately, the folks that are down there tend to pull it out. And those are the dumpsters that we're working with recology to replace for the Sacramento Regional Conservation Corps kids that come in and they put the trash into that. And then they're pulled out and dumped.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent presentation, Troy. I really like all your stepping it up here. You're doing really well. And the data is really helpful to understand, um, the pressures, the challenges that we face, you know, as a city. I think that when we did the city cleanup, one thing, you know, riding along with you and hearing directly from business owners. The, the form that we have has been extremely helpful and, um, but the challenge that I heard when I was with you, um, and I don't know if you want to expand on that, but you know, having, uh, the additional piece of it with this enforcement, legal aspect of it, where sometimes our policing can be kind of their hands tied in certain ways, right? But Yolo County has a homeless court established and they've done really well with their program. And I think we discussed this over a year ago, so I'm kind of wondering how, how our progress is coming along with the homeless court. You mentioned the DA interested, so, um, can we get some legs on that? I really think that that would be extremely valuable in everything else that you're talking about. I feel like I have cheat notes because I, I worked with this for over 20 some, you know, 17 years. So, you know, can you extend a little bit on that?
We have talked about that again, I hate to blame everything on COVID, but COVID disrupted the HART team and all the out, a lot of the outreach and the things that we were trying to get going. But here in just the last few weeks, um, we've had discussions with, um, the, the courts and they're looking, they've been pulling stats, looking at different programs. Andre or Deputy Lacon and I have looked at different programs and we're working together to try and move that forward. So that is been brought to the top of the list.
Because within homeless court, you could have, um, perhaps like community service requirements or some other kinds of ways that they can become. Hopefully our community that is homeless have some responsibility in, um, taking what they've done and maybe making it better for, for others, right?
Correct.
And so it's almost like, uh, when you're on probation and they give you community service hours or that kind of concept, which I'm in favor of that. I think the trash bags that you carry around and helping people just, you know, seeing that trash is just really destroys the view of a city and the community. And, um, I really like that you're doing that and the work with the HART team. It's taken a while to establish because of COVID, as you said, but you're, you're completely connected to all the resources that our county and city has available to us at this point. The challenge is that we don't have enough mental health services.
Correct.
I mean, and treatments and, and enough access to affordable housing. Those are some really big chunks of issues. But I think in view what you presented, our, our policing is doing the most, um, best work in, in, in this arena. I appreciate you for, for doing that. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, thank you very much for the presentation, very informative, very creative and well-done PowerPoint, I must say.
Very informative, very creative and well-done PowerPoint, I must say. And, you know, the question that's been asked, I share all the sentiments and everything. I did have one, it's a little bit of a zooming out just a little bit. One thing I'd like to point out, or people probably already noticed, but we are not singling out homeless people for being homeless. We are holding them accountable for the same laws that all of us in here are required to abide by. And I think that's important, because sometimes they might feel picked on, or some people might think that we're picking on them. However, we are not. We are just trying to keep our city clean and safe. And at the same time, because of your expertise and the partnerships you have internally and externally, and Eric was riding around with us the other day, you guys are, I mean, intertwined and active in communicating and have a plan for everything and everything that's going on. And very impressive. But, you know, I just want to make sure that folks understand that we, at the same time we're doing some enforcement, some education and some enforcement, we are also trying to do our best to get folks, these residents of our city, the help that they need. We rely on them to do their part, but we certainly plan on doing ours the best we can. So, and you're a big, huge part of that and so are the rest of the folks who've been talking today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll echo that with what you said. Well said. I think really what we're asking everyone that's a part of our community is to be a good neighbor, period. I think that's really what it boils down to. I do want to go back and ask you a question on one of your earlier slides, though, where you had mentioned your interaction with people that you're interacting with. A lot of them have drug addiction or alcohol addiction. Do we know how the drugs are making it into our community, into their hands so easily? I mean, it's been brought up in our chambers that they're getting fentanyl and everything else. And I know that that's, we can't go into great details, S net five and this and that, but do we have an understanding? Is this outside pressure that's coming in? Because obviously if you're residing on a doorstep of a business or you're residing in, how did you call it, Mark, the River View Terrace? River View Estates. You know, you're not exactly, you know, in the drug distribution process. So do we have any idea how those are making it to our community?
Yeah, I have a great relationship with most of the homeless out there. And they do talk to me. The new drug of choice for them is fentanyl. Used to be heroin and methamphetamine. And unfortunately, now that fentanyl has been hot on coming into town, they basically pulled the heroin back. They made it more difficult to get, because they knew that fentanyl was more addicting and they started pushing that and made that easier for them to get. It's my understanding from talking to the folks that once you do fentanyl, you can't go back to heroin. The heroin does not do the same thing that fentanyl does. And I have had discussions, frank discussions with many of them, and I do pass that information on to net five. And I do believe that they have a great understanding of what's going on in that process. And it's, and a lot of the calls for service that you're going to hear from the fire department is drug overdoses. One of the homeless that I talked to, now what they do is they use the fentanyl, but they will sprinkle a little bit of methamphetamine on there to help reduce the possibility of them overdosing. This is how bad that problem is, how bad they are addicted, that they're willing to put themselves at death's door just for a fix. And that's, one of the hard things is that we don't even have enough services to be able to get those people into. And that's where we say it needs to be immediate. When Emily and I go out and talk to someone and they're like, yeah, I'm ready to go. Let's go, I'll take it. If we don't have that person swept up and on the way, they will change their mind.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other questions from the council, I will use your segue right into Fire, which I believe is Chief Alexander.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As you're going to hear tonight, the homeless impact affects the entire city. However, I'm here to speak on behalf of the impacts that it has to the fire department. Officer Karowski did a great job of explaining the difference, that there is transients and homeless that broken into the city and also the river bottoms. Tonight, I'm going to talk about both, not just the city, since the fire department is, Yuba City Fire goes outside of the city limits, outside of the sphere of influence, and we handle the CSAG area. So we also handle the river bottoms, the Keyhole area and those portions of the outside. So I'm going to start with the numbers right off the bat. And we started covering and recording transient-related incidents in May 4th of last year. And I will be very honest that these are very conservative numbers. When you implement a tracking method, there is a learning curve to that and there's components that you don't even foresee of how you track some of those numbers, you know? Not every call we pull up to and say, hey, there's a transient right here and we can verify. So there's a learning curve of how do we kind of feel that that's a call? Talking to crews, giving these numbers, because this is about a 10-month period, just a little over a 10-month period, I would say these are very conservative numbers and that the reality is, is probably about 30% higher. So during that 10-month period, we ran 757 transient or homeless-related calls. 124 of those were fires, including two structure fires, 45 brush or grass fires. I'll talk in depth in each one of these as we go through. 410 medical aid responses. Our total fire loss for the structures involved was 305,000, including one commercial occupancy that was $285,000 in property loss. During that period of time, the 757 calls account for 8% of our call volume throughout the year. And again, this is for a 10-month period, not an entire year. And again, I do feel that these numbers are low as we go through here. So the type of incidents that we're responding to, and I mentioned that we respond not just to the city proper, but the CSAG area, but we're also, is the fire department affected by other jurisdictions in regards to homelessness? So the one on the top left is our commercial occupancy that burned as a direct result of an escaped illegal burn from a transient camp. But also, we cross over the river and go into other jurisdictions. This isn't our fire on the bottom right, but it's a direct result of the consequences of what our department has to face when dealing with transient-related issues. And those numbers were not accounted for when we talk about going into other jurisdictions. So mutual aid did not account for those. Those are classified as something completely different, including property loss. So vegetation fires. This eats up during the summer, a big chunk of our resources. I gave you the numbers there, but when I talk about a normal vegetation fire, these are a little bit different. You're almost involving residential camps, as was mentioned, in the river bottoms. These are large structures with all of their properties surrounding them. So it makes things challenging more than you would have a normal vegetation fire. Specifically, what I talk about when we had some last year, is a lot of these individuals, when we have a vegetation fire and we're trying to do our normal operations to mitigate it, is they're refusing to leave their camps. So it completely takes what we would normally do to contain, set up our box and control this, where we're trying to perform life threat, forcibly remove individuals, knowing that this is going to burn into their camps. And then the after effects also. So once you have a vegetation fire, these are long incidents. These can go multiple hours, overnight, next day. This takes a lot of, we call it mop-up or overhaul of these incidents. You're getting these transients coming back into these sites, which are a hazard for personnel, but a hazard to themselves. It makes, again, the entire process much longer. I really should be honest on those vegetation fires, is the reality is, we kind of, in Yuba City, we say they're more rubbish fires. Because we understand when we respond to calls, we're inherently taking on some of the health risks associated with responding to these calls, the smoke, the components. But you really can't fight vegetation fires wearing the same equipment you would with structure fires. You just can't. It's not feasible. But a lot of the components, the bad aspects, the hydrocarbons, those were mixed into those vegetation fires. So I then transitioned over to the rubbish aspect. It was just mentioned about the dumpsters down there. This is a good example of having those components pulled out of those dumpsters, lit on fire and the process associated with extinguishment. We request that our personnel put on all their equipment they would for fight for structure fires, because it's just the hazards associated with the smoke. Another picture here identifies north up above the corp yard, the Conex boxes of individuals climbing inside. Even though it's a rubbish fire, there's still components of it that we have to establish as almost like a structure fire. And then you have broken down vehicles or vehicles that are just housed, they catch on fire, they create a whole nother element, especially during the summer, that could lead to the vegetation and the property damage associated with it. So in the fire service, our primary goal is life safety, property conservation. And so a lot of these incidents will start to spread out to the property aspect. EMS aspect. So we talked about a little bit in regards to the drug addiction aspect. And I can't say for those that all of these 36 incidents that we've had for the first 60 days are all transient-related. Unfortunately, we don't have that ability to track that at this time with our current records management software. But for the first 36 days, we had 36 incidents where we provided Narcan or Noxolum to an overdose patient. And what that is, is it's a medication that you provide, the way we provide it is through a nasal spray that blocks the opioid receptors in the brain, so that it stops that from any type of opioid overdose, whether that's morphine, oxycontin, or, which was mentioned, fentanyl. And so for those who are not familiar with fentanyl, fentanyl is 80 times more potent than morphine and is over 100 times more potent than heroin. So it has an impact. So when I say there's 36 incidents and you see estimated 72 doses, I'll be honest, when I first started, when we gave Narcan, you give one dose, the person would sit up and be fine, maybe vomit and be okay. Now we're providing a minimum of two doses with fentanyl and it honestly barely phases them. We're starting to see in the last 60 days, at least on the fire personnel side, it's powdered smoked fentanyl. So taking the fentanyl, crushing it up and inhaling it. And when you start to break down, when you live in the EMS world, you understand absorption, ingestion, inhalation and how fast it kicks in. So if you got it on your skin contact, you're looking hours, maybe even days before you feel it. You ingest it, you're looking maybe a couple hours, but when you inhale it, it's minutes. And taking that potent of a chemical and smoking it is, it's, we're going through sometimes three doses and it's still really, when they come out of it, barely phasing them. We've been very fortunate. We have a great EMS program that's been able to secure a lot of this Narcan through grants. However, it is very expensive and I'm assuming that eventually that that process is going to run out in regards to that. So we're estimating that at least 72 doses for the first 60 days of 2022 that we provided. As part of those components, each one of these brings a little bit even the complexity of it. So access issues, look at the Conex boxes that are used as a housing situation that we would normally not think of in regards to a housing aspect. These camps, these are not simple camps that you walk up to. They're usually encircled with something, they have multiple layers of debris and the concerns associated with that aspect. And that ties into my next slide. The hazards of what we're putting our fire personnel and our EMS personnel into when responding to these calls. This is under a tunnel under 99. This area routinely catches on fire and our personnel have to go in there and extinguish the fire. But it's hard to see on here, but when I talk about the hazards, I don't know if you can see the large knife that's sticking up right behind the red and white checkered box right there. So when our personnel are responding to the scenes, we've mentioned the mental stability, the drug abuse. We're putting individuals in a situation where, one, violence is always something that I'm concerned about with our personnel. The type of smoke conditions that they're exposed to entering a confined space on this one to try to extinguish it. But we're looking at things along biological hazards. When you're performing CPR and you're engaged with needles on the ground, feces on the ground, I'll be honest, some of the worst situations that I can think of on vegetation fires is stepping into the feces pits that you have set up around camps. Those are not fun experiences and you're exposing yourself to those biologicals, but we're all cognizant and everybody who's going to continue to speak here tonight of the amount of needles that you're exposed to throughout the process. And then I believe that they'll even be, the concern around fentanyl exposure from direct contact. So there's lots of hazards that are associated with that. So breaking down a cost is very challenging in regards to really getting a good, accurate number. So estimated costs to the Yuba City Fire Department for a 10-month period, and I'm going to be saying that this is very conservative, averaging out a one hour per call, knowing that the response time, at-scene time, decon time, incident report time, that's probably the average. But again, I'm being on the low side, because any one of those vegetation fires is going to be over an hour. The structure fires are going to be over an hour and you're involving multiple resources associated with that. Taking the OES apparatus reimbursement rates, looking at a fully burdened engine company, looking at the market rate of Narcan, this doesn't account, like I said, for larger-scale incidents. When we have one of those vegetation fires, we have multiple resources. It's easy for us to take three engines out of the city and commit them to a vegetation fire, five engines to be committed to a structure fire. So we have callback that comes in and staffs those stations. This number does not account for the callback portion. It doesn't account for the multiple-hour incidents. And it doesn't account for the EMS supplies minus the Narcan. The realities with COVID and supply chain issues, everything we have on our apparatus has skyrocketed. Medical gloves, wipes, you name it, everything's gone up. So we've taken all those into account with those numbers. It's $26,000 per month for a total of $261,000 that we've spent. If we were going to get a reimbursement rate, that's how I would bill this out. Are there any questions?
Bring it back to the council. Councilmember? Go ahead. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. Great presentation. I know you're not looking forward to probably another long fire season based on the amount of rainfall we've had this winter. Unfortunately, it seemed like last summer, almost a daily occurrence. I'd looked out towards South Town, Shanghai, and it was a plume of smoke. And I know the folks out there, when I was going door-to-door, were frustrated with it. In your perfect world, I mean, how do we limit the almost daily occurrence of fires down there?
Fuel's mitigation would be key, being able to get those camps completely removed, being able to have complete fuel removal, not, I shouldn't say complete, but to make sure that we have adequate fuel removal. We're going to work on this year on the things that we can handle, which is working with the levee district to make sure that those levees are burning off. However, vast majority of our time is spent where it levels off and goes into the brush and tree line. We call it the jungle, the heavy vines. Those are very difficult to burn, let's say, burn off in that process or when we're trying to do our containment issues. Because there's camps that go way deep, I almost call them little tunnels that go all the way in there. And it's just not, number one, priority of the fire service, life safety. We can't just fire that off when we have vegetation, because we know that we have individuals in there that may not want to leave. So we're trying to do our best to handle both.
Thanks, Chief.
Councilwoman Spadola.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Chief. Awesome presentation and the content, bringing in new information that I just really hadn't fully thought of and lots of conversations. I think focusing on the fentanyl issue, because I think, you know, as Councilmember Harris said earlier, you know, homeless folks aren't the issue always of these issues, but with this fentanyl, it's not only homeless that you're dealing with. These are calls of all community, right? That all ages and with, that's alarming, in 60 days, 36 incidents? That's, those numbers are really... that's, those numbers are really...
And I'm trying to get our fire personnel to our EMS cadre, basically, to figure out where that matches up as statewide per capita, because to me, that jumps out and is a concern.
Yeah, that's a really, that's a really high number. And then the concern is, you know, with this fentanyl is in the hands of young people or older people and the aspect of non-homeless, that's also a big issue that I'm seeing that in our community. I'm glad that you brought that forward, but what else can we help you with for you and your team to do a better job and as you're doing a really good job, you know, preparing for this next end of what you need from us, you know, to make sure you're hoping?
Officer Kosky did a great job of giving some educational components, we encourage that, discussions with the DBA, like I said, with the property loss, encourage to have locking dumpsters, because it's, it's very common to have those small little rubbish fires that seem mundane that turn into something significant. So a little fire in an alleyway could quickly turn into a entire commercial block on Plumas. So I'm always thinking of the worst case scenario and how to play through that. So having those measures put in place, trying to work with the educational component, especially cleanup aspect, and finding ways to make sure that we continue to clean up those camps and maintain that through, because I know it's going to be spoken about when that grant runs out, but we've made progress, I'd like to continue to see that progress being made and expand it out into other areas in regards to cleanup.
So cleanup is important, you're saying, just not in the region of the river bottoms, but in the city community area too?
City and north.
And north, okay.
Especially up around the train trestle, those areas, it gets pretty significant.
Okay. And the whole aspect, when our team goes in for the feces and the needles and all that, is there equipment that they use protective enough for them to walk in through those situations? I mean, I know it sounds really terrible the way that I'm asking it, but I mean, I'm concerned for our team as they're approaching.
We do the best we can, but I'll be honest, when you're, when you're trying to do CPR and work up a cardiac patient, you're in the mix, and you can see that tunnel picture, it's dark, lots of things, lots of chemicals, they do the absolute best that they can, and they do a fantastic job. It's just, that's a risk, and as the fire chief, I want to minimize my risk to my personnel as much as I possibly can.
So let us know how we can help you in that minimizing of our staffing safety as well in their work. Thank you.
That's Member Boon Garden. Also, Member Harris, did that... Would you like? Okay.
Thanks, chief. I think that the takeaway for me really quickly is, is the burden that the normal, if there is such a thin call volume that police and fires experiencing, is only getting more, more stressed by the fact that, of the resources that you're all having to spend on, you know, things related to this homeless issue that continues to grow. So I think that, you know, that takeaway part of this workshop, of course, and we'll be entertaining more of these with our partners, as the mayor mentioned, is understanding kind of a system-wide how this is getting stressed, and simple little things like a rubbish fire prevent you from responding to that heart attack, or that, you know, vehicle accident with major injuries, or a true big, you know, multifamily residential structure fire. Five engines in Yuba City, okay? And if they get down in the river bottoms, that takes three at minimum.
Minimum, and you're spot on.
It leaves two fire engines for the remaining 70,000 people. And, and, you know, I don't know the numbers for law enforcement, but I know the commitment when I see an in-progress incident, that's a huge draw, and that leaves, again, a large portion of the population exposed for another emergency. So, you know, I appreciate getting more, kind of quantifying a little bit more what's going on here. Thank you for your presentation, sobering, but thank you.
Absolutely, and you hit the nail on the head, especially with our overlapping calls. So last year, we exceeded 11,000 calls for service total, and 46% of those were what we call overlapping calls. So we have one incident going on, we're dispatching another incident. So you can see how the ripple effect can quickly occur, especially when you have multi-engine, large structure response. That commercial fire, that was not a quick knockdown, that's a long prelude of time where the city, for the most part, is left relatively uncovered during that period of time.
Good. All right. Chief, thanks for the presentation. Hopefully you will understand the question I'm asking because your job is dangerous, as well as PD's is dangerous, just by the nature of what you guys deal with. But the issues that you've shared tonight with the needles, the feces, the biological hazards, the everything, does that put our, our fire department at more risk of being undermanned and compromised, and is it having that kind of potential impact on us? Or, because I'm seeing a correlation with PD, the percentages kept going up over the last three years. I'm seeing, just in your numbers, I expect they're probably going to go up as well. Are we really running that kind of risk that with all the precautions that you take, that they could get, you know, compromised, I guess you want to call it biologically or whatnot, from a needle or something of that nature, easier with what we're dealing with than getting injured in a, in a fire situation?
I was going to say yes to everything until the very last comment in regards to a fire incident, because there's an enormous amount of risk of running into a burning building. But absolutely, those, we've been very fortunate in regards to our workers' comp claims as a result of those aspects, but sometimes you don't even know what you get picked up and bring back. I'll use the example, this morning, coming into work, the crews were literally mopping the back portion of the cab because of walking through feces and getting in the back portion of the cab. So it's things that maybe, that I know when I first started, I didn't see those situations very often, and we do the best we can, but absolutely increases our workers, the potential for workers' comp injuries along with that. But these easily transition into vegetation fires, structure fires, very easy. And I focused on a 10-month period, lots of stuff I could pull from even prior, I just don't have the data to quantify since we only started on May 4th.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I was going to transition into, Sarah, could you pull the website with the data? So one thing I wanted to point out, you see the maps in the back and this portion that was done by George Barlow based upon fire and PD's call volume that were provided him. So what you see on here are blue and red dots. Blue is PD, red is fire, and I won't talk too much on the PD aspect, but each dot represents at least three incidents at that location. So you can kind of see like, hey, there doesn't seem to be that many dots. You just got done talking about how the river bottoms looks pretty rough, and you're only showing three dots on here. That's a minimum of three. That could be 40 at that one spot, but to be able to show and identify hotspots, that's how it was calculated. So as you kind of zoom out in a bigger picture aspect, you kind of see where some of our hotspots throughout the city. I love this kind of aspect because it allows me to feel like I'm at least start to be proactive instead of reactive. I was kind of surprised at some areas that I found were hotspots. You can see on here, we have the bridge in Franklin along 99, those are all hotspots, Shanghai Bend, and then anything along the, really the Highway 20 corridor, especially around Gray and Clark, for fire, that's big. And then as you see as you work out, north of town, along Live Oak Aspect and the corp yard, there's significant incidents there. But this kind of gives you, takes that and puts it on this portion as a bigger picture aspect. Questions on that?
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, chief. We will move on to our next presenter, and who do we have next?
My name's Rob Condry, I'm the Parks and Ground Superintendent for the city. I've been here since 92, so I've seen a lot within the city. I'm going to tell you how the homeless affects our department in specific. So the number one concern we have is health hazards. I know you've heard a lot about health hazards today, so these are the ones, one of the items we deal with every day, the feces, the urine, if it isn't in the bathroom, it's on the walls, if we lock the bathrooms, it's in the shrubs, so it's basically everywhere. I won't show you that slide for too long, but we also have the health hazards, so number one concern, we do have, as everyone spoke on it, it's drugs, the drug paraphernalia they leave behind when we clean up homeless camps in the river bottoms as well as in the parks. This particular picture here was from San Brandon Park, so during the night sometime, you know, they use during the night and then we have to clean it up the next day. San Brandon Park has experienced increased vandalism and activity by the homeless. We see that every day, a lot of the homeless, some of them hang out at the parks, at the tables, some of the homeless actually hang out in vehicles all day long there. So they'll hang out during the day, and then they know at night they can't camp because of the signs we put up, so then they'll leave at night, and then they come back during the day, and they basically stay there all day long. These are some of our resident, along with just staying in the park all day long, they leave this kind of mess behind, it creates hazards as well, because honestly, we don't know what's in all those cardboard boxes, you know, it can be anything from drug-making stuff to old food, whatever, whatever they decide to leave behind. And all these pictures you're seeing right now are from San Brandon Park. Most of our parks with barbecues and restrooms create the most, they're most attractive for the homeless. So we have Gauze A Aquatic Facility and San Brandon Park, they have the, most of the restrooms and barbecues. In this particular picture, all the slats were taken off the top of the shade structure, most likely for recycling purposes, so whatever they can borrow, steal, you know, they take that, recycle it. This picture is from Plumas Tower, under the tower, we had quite a problem there, and we worked with code enforcement and PD to get that cleaned up. Right before Christmas stroll, we worked pretty hard, we hauled out probably three dump trucks full of stuff on consecutive days. It took us to go back several times, actually persuade them to find a new location. And you can see the graffiti on the wall, obviously, some of this is more gang-related and then not homeless, other stuff, you can tell they're sending letters to each other, so we have to assume some of it's homeless. Also on Plumas Street, well, I'll go back. On Plumas Street, we worked there on Monday and Friday morning, and we pick up all the trash, we blow the streets, the street supervisor comes through there. We've had employees spit on, we've had them hit, we've had them, someone chased down with a pipe one day, so, so it's, you know, it's become, you know, somewhat of a, somewhat of a safety concern for our employees as well. This is the picture of the town fountain, because of mechanical issues, we had to drain the fountain, and as soon as we drained the fountain, they moved in. So we worked with PD and they kicked people out of the fountain, but in the meantime, they were able to damage the bowl a little bit, so we had to fill it back up even though we didn't have filtration, just so they wouldn't live in the fountain. This is a picture of the 10th Street Bridge, the homeless pretty much have learned how to run the irrigation systems for two reasons. One, they, they use them to take showers, they'll bleed the valves manually, they take showers in them, and then they also know how to shut down the flow control so that they don't get wet at night while they're sleeping. So we screw these valve box lids down, and then you can see what they do, we screw them down so they can't get them off, and then they break the lid, so, so we have to pay our contractor to fix these things for us. And all this equals money, time, you know, time lost from our city staff to take care of these issues. This is a great picture of Greenwood Park, except for the sign, it's a little crooked, but unfortunately, we're starting to find homeless in, in some of our nicer neighborhood parks, not only our, our community park. So recently, we had to kick some people out of Greenwood Park, which, which goes to show this, they're expanding, they're reaching out to new neighborhoods, trying to find new places to live, sometimes new things to steal. Basically, I kind of broke it down a little bit into how it affects us. Like I said, we got money spent for irrigation, irrigation repair, we have graffiti remover we have to spend to take care of all the graffiti they leave behind. It equals out to about $10,000 roughly cost for the Parks Division, and just like police and fire, I think this is a pretty low estimate, so probably actually more actuality. This is a sign real quick, that we're, everybody's been talking about this sign, so if there's a location within the park that PD can't, you know, they don't have jurisdiction to go in there and tell, tell the homeless they have to leave if we don't have this sign in place, so. So you can see a few of the things written down on here, one of them's overnight camping, so that's, I think that's the biggest way we can get them not to stay and basically live there forever. That's pretty much what I have. Is there any questions?
Questions from the council? Councilman Harris? Spadola?
Thanks, thanks, Rob. Just an estimate, over the last, say, two or three years, pretty steady increase, I know you said it's penetrating further and further west into the city, but is the, is the homeless issue increasing in your opinion in the parks, or, I know San Brandon's been historically a tough spot, but you're seeing it in these others, and it's getting worse and worse, it sounds like.
Yeah, like I said, it's increasing ge, in the geography in the parks, like it's spreading out, but also in San Bran, you can visually see, you know, when I, I've been here since 92, so we used to have a few people that would hang out there, but never in the vehicles like they do now, they just, you know, they literally lie in the parking spaces in the morning, so, and it seems like, seems like they get more and more every year, so.
Okay. Thanks. Spadola?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. It really, the visuals, the pictures are just, you can't, you know, that's, a picture doesn't necessarily lie from the data that you see. I spent a lot of time at San Brandon Park, and it's really disturbing to see that there's so much of that activity, because there's parts of the community that really enjoys the park and families, and, and I've seen directly from your team, they go out there clean. I know that if, what if a business or a section of our community see, you know, some of this waste or somewhere, can they call in and will you help go clean it up, pick it up? You know, because some people leave cards and different, and that's going to be Eric's thing, I know the card expert. But do you do any of that for our constituents if there's waste and other things beyond the parks?
Oh, definitely. We get calls every day, and so we just respond to them, kind of as public works, and PD do.
Right, and they use, what can people use to call in, or what app do we have?
Well, we get, we get a call into our Parks Division, or you can use the YC 311 app, a lot of people do do that as well, they report the graffiti a lot of times, or waste left behind.
Because I have seen where people call in and you immediately, within hour or hours of that same call, go in and clean up, so I think that that's important for local businesses or community to know that that's available to them.
Yeah, we definitely, we try to get everybody to do the YC 311 app, that way, if they talk to a park employee while they're out there doing their job, a lot of times, you know, they get busy and some stuff goes on, so if you use the YC 311 app, it's, then it's logged, we can track it easier that way as well, so I'd definitely recommend that to people that see trash or homeless stuff laying around, so take care of it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Welcome. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. It's really kind of disheartening to see the kind of stuff that you folks have to deal with out there. Taking a look at some of these, I guess I'll call them vulnerabilities in our parks, are these, have these been taken into consideration in the designing of our new park that we're about to break ground on? about to break ground on?
Our rest, our new restroom facilities, we'll have locking doors, so we'll have the ability, hopefully, to lock those from a computerized system. So we see a lot of the problems revolving around restrooms. So if we have issues with them, we'll be able to lock them. And that's one of the main things that we deal with, that will, will be addressed in this new park.
And the, and the irrigation?
We didn't spec out locking valve boxes because as you see, they just, then they destroy them. It's almost better to leave the lids loose, you know? Otherwise, it takes time, you know, hours to dig them up, fix them, repair the lid, whatever the case may be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming tonight. A couple of questions that I have is the current slide you have up there, it talks about the signage at the parks, but it only lists four parks. Do we have signage at all of our parks?
Yes, we do. I'm sorry, these are some of the most recent areas we put signs in.
Okay.
So they were, there was some motor homes tending to camp out at, at the Plumas Fountain. So we installed these in the Plumas Fountain area, at Plumas Tower with the, with the combined effort between us and PD, we put signs up here. And then they were able to get them out of Plumas Tower area, so.
Okay. Thank you. The other question I have, and this, again, this is about people being a good neighbor, you know, whether or not this is, it would seem to be related to the homeless issue, but San Brandon Park in general. I've talked to many people and it gets, really gets into the safety concerns there. Has that really upticked with the population of people that are, you know, parking there during the day, hanging out? I mean, quite honestly, I've, I've heard it from people that are scared to go to San Brandon Park. And can you speak to that with any knowledge of its, is it related or unrelated? Or we have multiple issues going on there?
Our park staff does relay that to us, that people come up and tell them they don't want to bring, you know, the families there and have barbecues, birthday parties, whatever, because of all the homeless people. When we did, recently, we improved the tennis courts and turned half of them into pickleball courts. So since, I think there's kind of a scale. So once we got a lot of the more responsible, respectable people at the park, it kind of drove out a little bit of the riffraff. So I think more positive activities such as the pickleball than, and the improvements we plan on doing in the park will help maybe, maybe some of the homeless. Hopefully not go to Greenwood, but somewhere else.
Right. Yeah. Really, it gets back to, as a community, understanding, if I can paraphrase what you said, of, they're community parks for a reason. They're there for the entire community. You know, we have the skate park, we have the pickleball courts. We, a lot of little leagues use the parks for practice and for fields and such. And it's there for everyone to enjoy and we need to be very respectful of each other. And whatever type of person is that's causing this distress across the board, we need to help identify and figure it out over time because it needs to be a safe community. It gets back to our core value, I think, of what we talked about with quality of life as we built those four pillars. We want our families to be able to go to the parks, be able to enjoy it. And we don't want problems going from San Brandon to Greenwood to Gauze. We don't want them migrating. We need to try to figure out the problem and get it solved. So, thank you. Does anyone else in the council have any other issues? Or issues or questions? A lot of issues. So, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So we will go to our next presenter.
Good evening, Mayor, council, fellow staff and citizens. I see my job as a code enforcement officer as being the cleanup coordinator. And I spend a lot of time with Troy Koski. He and I, phone calls back and forth, site visits back and forth. I make sure before I take in a crew for cleanup, that Troy or somebody has been able to go in from the law enforcement community to make sure that it's safe for other people to go into that area, just from the standpoint of people. So a day in the life of code enforcement officer, it's become a major cog. See how far we can go here, the wrong direction. Code enforcement's become a major cog in dealing with camp cleanups, as well as just the individual locations where they're hanging out. Abandoned camps, abandoned homeless property, wherever that may be, abandoned homeless shopping carts, dealing with all of those issues. At least 50% of my current work week is spent dealing with homeless issues, dedicated to tracking, removing abandoned homeless camps, trash, et cetera. Partner with Troy Koski, homeless liaison officer. Partner with Deputy Andre Lecan in Sutter County because the grant that we got does overlap into some of that territory as well. And what we do as a team is we locate and then we assess each of these camps or any of these locations, and then we prioritize those locations for mitigation. After a campsite has been abandoned, my task becomes to either communicate with the private property owner to remove the, what property was left on their property because the city isn't staffed and isn't funded to be able to go to all these properties and clean them. And that's an unfortunate thing because the property owners get kind of frustrated because they're cleaning up stuff they didn't bring in there and it wasn't their, their, their staff, it wasn't their personnel, it wasn't their clients that brought it in. I also coordinate with SAC Regional Conservation Corps team or the Public Works staff, depending on where it's at in town, to remove abandoned items on public lands. The SRCC, SAC Regional Conservation Corps, paid through a CalRecycle grant that the city was able to obtain. It was a $250 grant, $250,000 grant, to be used within a two-year cycle. That cycle's coming to an end in June, so I, for the whole two years, so that grant's going to be going away. And there's no new grant in place. It's not a grant we can go get right after. You know, once you get one cycle, you don't get the next one. You can apply and we're, I think the city's looking at a year from now, applying again. But that leaves us with a year of not having that resource. Or, I drive a pickup truck for a reason. I load a bunch of stuff. And there's times that Officer Koski and I are throwing fully loaded shopping carts in the back of a pickup truck, or I'm reaching out to Public Works or Parks and saying, hey, I see such and such. Can your crew come and help me out with that? Because it looks really bad for the city. Recent major cleanup, Officer Koski talked about that. It's cities' own property, but it's Sutter County jurisdiction, even though it covers both sides of the river, which really was one of those head-scratcher's for us, because it was just one of those, we weren't aware. And once we became aware that that was our property on the other side of the river and all those camps and all those vehicles that we could see were really our responsibility to deal with, the city staff responded very well. And we worked with Deputy Lecan and all these other departments. As you can see, Uba City Police, Uba City Code, Public Works, Sutter County Sheriff's Department, Sutter County General Services, Road Department, other agencies. We had the HART team down there because we always offer, and let me tell you, Troy's not just a police officer, he's a social worker. He spends a lot of time. If Emily's not able to be there, Troy's giving them the same information over and over and over again. And we had California Department of Fish and Game, Highway Patrol, SRCC team, Hold of California. We had a bulldozer down there working for, for several days. This was a major, major project. We had to take their, their little trails and make them into roads so that we could get tow trucks and other equipment in to do the work. Bane's Towing and Recovery was, was exceptional because they took the big vehicles, the RVs, we had a pickup truck that was down in the water over a steep embankment from a camp. And they brought their big equipment in, dropped a boom and picked it right up and halted out of there. So that would not have been possible with any equipment that we have in the city. And every tow company that's on rotation with either Sutter County or Uba City law enforcement, every tow company had, had game in this one. So the scope of work, approximately 15 large camp locations. And when I say approximately, there were spots along where they, wasn't a major camp, but there was still other stuff. So it's, 15 is really a low estimate on that. Approximately 25 homeless individuals in those camps. Of those, we only had one that was willing to receive services. We've got another one we're still working with, hoping he, he will make that choice. Over 100 vehicles, 700 cubic yards of debris and removed. And to put that into a picture, that's 70 truckload, truck, dump truck loads of trash, debris, and over 5,000, 1,000 man-hours. So now the oohs and ahs, these are before and afters of the exact same locations. So as you can see, you've got piles of junk. This particular guy, the pile is actually after we had started gathering it. This gentleman self-proclaimed his, his street name is Peg Leg because he's one-legged. So, no offense, that's just what he calls himself and he's willing to go by that. And now you can look and see the river. This particular camp, this was one of the guys that was self-proclaiming to have been there at least 10 years. This is the most complicated, sophisticated campsite I think any of us have come across. He's got his water tower that he pumped water into. He had a black hose that ran down and coiled on top of a table so that it would heat. And so he had solar heated water that ran down, not only to his washing machine, but he had a separate structure for a shower. He had a separate structure for his outhouse. He had separate structures for various workstations. I don't know if he saw himself as a mechanic, a handyman, or whatever, but he had all of that going on. And so, and when we were done, it was dirt. This particular site, the two pictures of the before, that's because you stood in the middle and you took a picture this direction, you turned around, you took a picture that direction. It was probably, what, 75 feet, 100 feet, long in just vehicles and garbage and trash. And this was one guy. And so that, that was a major focus for a while. And this particular gentleman, when we moved him initially out of the camp, he, he chose to just go somewhere else on city property over there and find another hidey hole and try to stay away from us. He did that, what, three or four times before we finally were able to convince him he had to leave that portion of that side of the river. Still don't know where he landed, but that's coming. This is the camp where the truck was down over the edge, so you see lots of junk, an RV. They had a van there, you see the nose of it. I think somebody had to jump-start it so they could drive it out of there, just so we could get everything else out. But now it's a clean site. We figured that if we wanted to, the city could go into RV camping sites and probably charge about 25, 30 bucks a night just for this site. It's a gorgeous location. It's right near the rapids. It's beautiful. So some of the challenges, the obstacles, insufficient funding and staffing to deal with all of those various types of, and numbers of our homeless population. Troy is doing an awesome job, but we need at least one other full-time liaison officer. And I know that's in the plan, but it's not in fruition and I, I don't know how to make that happen any quicker. But I say at least. I would think that there, there's a call for work for more. Limits on locations, scope for cleanup. The CalRecycle grant limited the space that we could actually be, use the SRCC team to clean. It's along the levee, it's the riverfront, it's Second Street, it's Feather River Parkway. The rest of the city, I can't take the team two to clean up. So all the rest of it is our Public Works or code enforcement or the private citizens cleaning up. Insufficient resources for rehab, mental health. I know Officer Koski's talked about that, but that's obvious as, as we deal with these individuals. It's very obvious that that is a necessary component to being able to help our homeless population. Insufficient permitted camp sites. You know, we have the Second Street tent camping area, we've got, we're working on an area for parking, but it's not within walking distance of our homeless population that can't move a block away just to get any services. So that's a frustration, I don't know how to answer that. A lack of any warming and cooling facilities. During the, the cool month of December, we did have one month, we would go out in, early in the morning and the people were just frozen every morning. And we, our community, we don't have any way, any place where they can go to stay warm or when the heat kicks up like it's going to this summer. We don't have any place for them to cool down. And then recidivism, that's, that's a huge problem because you move them out of one place, they go to another. Yes, we do that so they eventually will go to services. That's our intent. When Troy and I talk, that's, that's what we're working towards, is make it uncomfortable enough that these people will take services because we know that it's going to be better for their life. But as they choose not to, it's, and if we don't get a campsite cleaned up quickly enough, somebody else will move into that same site and it's just over and over and over again. It's a sickle, cycle. Some more oohs and ahs. This one was right riverfront, but it was on our side of the river. Great treehouse. I was jealous of the treehouse. I think all of us that go down there, we see some of these camps and we're going like, if I was a kid, I would live in that for a full year. My parents wouldn't know where I was at. But after we clean it, obviously, all gone. And I realize most of my before and after photos are along the riverfront. We do this kind of cleanup in the city. It's, the photos that I have are mostly down at the riverfront. I apologize for not taking more photos of trash in the city. This particular camp, it's in the Fish and Game territory and probably about where you see the, the blue toter, right in front of that is, I had the Conservation Corps clean in this area and I, I saw something sticking up out of the ground. I, usually I walk over and figure out what it is and pull it out. Well, it was the peg of a motorcycle that was in the sand. So approximate annual cost of code enforcement and the various cleanups, about half of my time loaded is 40, 40,900. SRCC team, because it's a grant, 125,000. That doesn't cost the city, but if we don't have the grant, are we paying? And this doesn't include all the other resources, Public Works, PD, et cetera. So some opportunities for improvement. Ben, was this where you were going to come in and share some thoughts?
I guess the only thing I wanted to add, so Ben Moody, Public Works and Development Services Director, and so I had a unique perspective because I've been able to work with Eric when we sat down and put this together, some of the thoughts, but also with Public Works, knowing Scott's team that you're going to hear from soon, and then also being tied into housing. into housing. And so, you know, and being a task-oriented guy and trying to be a problem solver, I guess what I wanted to communicate, these really came from Eric and me together, but I'm putting things into three buckets. And with those buckets, it's, there's needs relating, related just to helping humans, helping homeless individuals, you know, that goes into warming, cooling stations that are needed, minimizing the distance to legal campsites and shelters, just because when you push them off the street at night, you know, rest is for family and women, but it's not there for men with dogs at night. You have, you know, housing issues for low-income people. But then you get into the other two buckets that are equally just as important, helping business and private property owners, keeping our city clean, safe, and attractive. And so, the big takeaway that I wanted to add with that is that each, if you put resources in any of those buckets, it affects the resources needed in the other bucket. And so, that's what I would just add with that. And then, Eric, please go through it.
As Ben was sharing, the helping the homeless, it's the warming, cooling stations, minimizing the distance, increasing availability of rehab and mental health opportunities, helping our businesses and private property owners. We would need, I would think, need additional staff dedicated to homeless intervention, whether that's we, we hire our own heart team in essence, because Emily, as wonderful as she is and as helpful as she is, she's limited because she's spread over both counties and every entity therein. And there are times, the reason that Officer Kosky has to become a social worker is because Emily's not always able to be there at every opportunity. And so that might be something to look towards. So homeless liaison officers, code enforcement, outreach staff, those are all needed items. Keeping our city attractive and clean, additional staff. I know Public Works has a beautification team that they send out, but maybe it's some individuals like that that are dedicated strictly to removing the homeless debris, so that we can, could even offer that service to some of those businesses that don't have a large staff, don't have resources to clean up their own property of the larger camps. And then working to provide resources to the private property owners, I think that's really important. So, I think, even though I threw the quicker, I believe that was, yep, that was it. So, questions that I could help with?
We'll start this time with Councilwoman Espinola, if you have any questions.
The question, I don't have one right off the top of my head, but I just have to turn the button on here. It's just becoming a clear picture of what the needs are in this community, how you, I mean, additional needs, prioritizing. I really like the fact that you're providing us some additional needs and resources from our city to help. There's a disconnect in how the homeless community will access or want those services. That's like the biggest challenge, right? It's like, are you ready for, you know, mainstream community, as I call it? And we could offer all these things, but we need more outreach directly to the homeless community. Those that you're speaking of, out in the river bottoms, all those hotspot areas in our city, there was discussion of probably starting in a very specific area and kind of working intensely in one beat or another beat and really help these individuals get assistance. My question to you is, if we were to consider as a city developing our own extension, just about, you know, I don't know, homeless services or homeless department, I don't know, in the city, what would that price tag look like to develop a whole team on that? And I know that's not the question perhaps for you, but I mean, to think about it, because you mentioned it, you know, our own heart team in the city, if that's, if that's a direction that we want to explore, because if there's not enough of everything else, how do we, how do we help with these services?
As you can see the numbers that are being put up there, or someone could have.
As you can see, the numbers that each department is putting up here, that the cost that's involved with dealing with these folks every day, and the things that Emily and the heart team with the street nurses are able to do, I think the cost of that is going to reduce the cost to each department tremendously. So it's almost like it's going to be a savings. Because this is where, this, the outreach is what's helping move people from homeless into housing. I think the outreach is the thing. The enforcement part is what's helping keep them out of the businesses, but it's the outreach that's actually, I think, going to, to make that happen, which is going to reduce all the cost.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Eric. And, you know, I'm struck not only by the amount of resources and time and money and effort it takes for all of you to do what you're doing in response to the homeless situation, but I'm also struck by how it takes away from the job that you're intended to do. And that affects everybody else in the city. And so we have a very, relatively small minority of folks who require so much time, money, and effort just to keep above water. And outreach, I don't know if we need more, because I think Troy, everyone's doing such a great job. I think you probably know almost all of them, if not all of them. So the outreach is there. They know you're there. And I think one of the, one of the things when people drive through town and they see the conspicuous folks, the people that are camping out in front of, I don't know, my mom got married, the old New Bride Church there, all that stuff, that's the conspicuous folks. So I think if I'm correct in what I observed, is it's almost like you have, you hit it on the head, Eric, he's also a social worker, right? And what is it, Emily, out there too? Is she here?
Yeah, she's in here.
Oh, forgive me. I didn't see you. But it's almost like, it's not like they're, is this thing going through? It's almost like, it's not there, it's safe to assume, or people would assume, that these people are just in the wind, letting run wild, right? But they're not. You're tracking them, you know their names, and you have a case and you have a plan, if you will, for each and every one of them, it would appear to me. But in the interim, when they're caught in this purgatory, they don't have a roof under their, over their head, that's where the issues are. Because then they're out in the environment and they're hanging out with the wrong people, and then here we go with the, with all the other, and then they get hungry, and then theft and everything else. So it's, I think we have, and if you guys know more than I do, if we need more outreach, so be it. But I think we, they are aware that you're there, and you treat them with respect, which I think is critical to do that. So if long as we have a plan in place and people understand that there is a plan in place and there's hope for them, because I'm kind of concerned with some of the folks that do fall through the cracks. I think Ben brought it up, that a man with a dog might not necessarily have as much services available to him. And so where do these folks go that fall through? I think we might be worth some attention to figure out, so we have an answer, at least something for everybody, if possible. Grants are grants, and they like to focus on certain things, but there's a lot of opportunity potentially for that, those holes in that net to get a little bit bigger. I think we have a responsibility to play a role with our partners to address that. The goal being, of course, getting everybody healthy and on the right path. But that's what's something, some of the stuff I wrote down there. So thank you very much for everything. It's concerning that a half-time, half of your job, Eric, is diverted to that. So I think we have some work to do. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the, thank you for the presentation. How do you track the stuff that's going on in the river bottoms? Do you have to actually go drive down there and see it? Oh, boy.
And just last week, I think, there's a portion of the northern part along the river that the orchards, Feather River Parkway, up to the railroad trestle, that Troy and I really focused on and really got it pretty cleaned out of camps. And, but every now and then, I have to take a drive and take a look down along the edge of the river and see. And last week, yeah, there's a tent. And we still haven't been able to get out there because we're so busy with all the other tasks that we have going on. But yes, we have to drive it every now and then and put eyes on it.
I'm going to follow up to that for a second. It alarms me that, that the SRCC is going away. I mean, this is, again, one of the typical fears of getting a program started with grant funding, knowing that the grant's going to expire, and then the burden comes back to the city. And even though they're great programs, now all of a sudden, we're going to have to figure, you know, be creative and trying to figure out how to fill that gap. But going back to the, to the, because there are your cleanup crew down in the river bottoms, right, is that it seems to me, based upon your conversation with us, is that, that these guys and gals start small, and then they grow and grow and grow, and then they become worthy enough of a cleanup. Just, and this is going to sound like I'm getting way down in the weeds, but what happened if you had something to just kind of monitor that without having to drive down in there? And I'm thinking like drones or something, say, uh-oh, uh-oh, I've said something he liked, I guess.
That's, Yuba City Police Department does have an officer that is a pilot of drone.
Okay.
And we have utilized his skills because what Troy and I would walk to check along that particular stretch, and it would take us a couple hours. The drone was able to check it out in about 15 minutes and pin where those spots were at. So then we could walk straight to what camps were active.
And you could monitor growth too, I assume. And that way, you keep a small problem small rather than having to become overwhelming. Well, you guys are way ahead of me, so congratulations.
And let me speak to the small camp versus large camp, the growing thing. Every now and then, we have an individual, I'm thinking of one, that every time he's got a camp, it starts big and it gets bigger. He is just a hoarder and he accesses whatever people leave out. And it's always a huge mess, and it's just one guy. He doesn't like to be around other people, but it's always a big mess. He happens to be incarcerated right now. We are thankful that he's out of the picture for a while. But he'll come back, we know.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, Eric, for that presentation and all your hard work protecting and cleaning up our river bottoms. It's kind of disheartening to think that if we would have had a high-water event this year, what that would have looked like to not only us, but the folks downstream. But just a point of clarification, you said that the property east of the Feather River falls under our Yuba City's jurisdiction?
Mm-hmm.
Where exactly is that?
It's the, it's from the water filtration, the south plant. It's the ponds that are on the other side of the river.
To, how far, how far south does that go?
Yeah, it's south of River Bend. It's...
On the east side of the river?
On the east side of the river, yes.
So Riverfront Park?
South.
South.
Okay, okay.
South. It's, it's, it's south. It's, we're out there really in the weeds.
To clarify, Wade, it's city property, but just not within the city limits.
Yeah.
So therefore, we were property owners over there.
Okay.
Right. And just like it's Sutter County's jurisdiction to patrol, but it's on the other side of the river.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
Just two very quick. When was the cleanup done, the date?
Of the, the other side, the east side, that was done over the last two months. It started a little before then, but it took us about six weeks to do that actual cleanup. And we just finished it last week.
Okay. So were, all the members, the partners that you mentioned, was that funded through the grant, the 250?
No.
No?
SRCC is the only funding through the grant.
Right, but that grant only provided for the...
It's city property within levees, because that was the other, it was within the levy on the other side of the river.
Oh, okay. So we, did we reimburse the county or, okay, so we're going to reimburse the county. So all those partners, okay, I won't commit to anything, Ben. I'm just saying that we, Supervisor Baines, don't hold me to it, sir, because you might be recording it. No, I'm just kidding. So, I got it. Thank you.
All right, Eric, thanks for being here. Along those lines, I thought we were going to need a cleanup on Al II just a minute ago.
What's going on over there?
But...
That's the driving the door.
There we go.
Yeah, thank you, first of all, for all you do. I mean, the, I know the burden that we've put on you with code enforcement to deal with all sorts of things, and half your time is dealing with probably one of the biggest issues that affects every other issue around here. So first of all, my thanks, because you do an incredible job. The other question that I have is, you know, we have, you mentioned we have the need for cooling and warming centers. My first thoughts, you know, because we do have different ones that will open up, my thought went to state property. Have we thought about partnering with the fairgrounds for some of their auxiliary buildings, maybe that they're not using at different times to utilize those? Because the fairgrounds, they're used quite frequently, but they have a lot of outbuildings and stuff that we might even be able to open, small warming centers or cooling centers, and take in the gentleman with the dog, you know? And have we approached them before, or has that ever been brought up?
There's not been any approach to this or trying to resolve it. It's something that Officer Kosky and I have become aware of, and we talk about it, but because we're so heavily tasked with so many things, and we just have not been able to present it to a portion of our city staff that can take that on and set it up well.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was my only question. Any other questions from the council? All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Chandler, I believe you're
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Scott Chandler, Deputy Public Works Director of Maintenance. I'm going to talk to you about some of the impacts it is, we have on Public Works. Negative effects of homelessness on city departments and staff. The safety and well-being of the staff is the highest priority. Employee hazards include human waste with an increased risk of becoming ill from waterborne diseases, bodily injuries, including sprains, strains, and back injuries, exposures to bloodborne viruses, including HIV and hepatitis C. Some more current concerns is the powdered fentanyl. In the shopping cart slide, you can see the homeless, they insert razor blades to protect some of their carts. So we preach to the staff, don't become complacent, make sure you're, you know, you're checking the carts out. They'll mount needles. Last Friday, they've actually, we do a buddy lift on the carts, so they started mounting needles on the bottom of the carts. So. Continuous retrieval of shopping carts and other household items is couches, mattresses, and portable commodes. That would be your five-gallon buckets. We've been averaging, I'm sorry, we've been averaging about 15 carts a week. And usually, they're full of personal, you know, bunch of garbage. Inconvenience when scheduled, when scheduled works gets put off due to assisting with encampment cleanups. Staff feels the community views them in a negative light. Staff feels the community views them in a negative light. Um, staff, uh, takes a lot of pride in what they do and, uh, when the staff starts a project, they like to, to follow that project through and finish it. But, um, a lot of these cases, they're being pulled off the job and not able to complete these tasks. Um, staff's hearing the typical stereotypes, types, um, oh, you look at our, uh, tax dollars, hard at work, um, you're overpaid, um, are you going to really, uh, finish this job? Uh, property owner gets upset when scheduled work takes longer than expected. An example, uh, this resident was unable to utilize their sidewalk, front door access and, uh, section of the driveway. Typically, that's a three-day job for us. Um, with staff being pulled away, um, with a homeless, homeless issues, that took eight days to do. Uh, training of new employees has been hindered. Uh, difficulty are difficult for new hires to gain experience providing city services such as paving, concrete, uh, work, crack sealing, et cetera. Um, because when we get the call, we have to pull off the job and then come back. And, uh, typically, um, to go back, finish the job, it will be your veterans who've been here for quite some time and the new, uh, hires end up cleaning up the homeless encampments. Uh, not only does it affect the, the streets, it affects the electrical department. Um, this is a traffic signal cabinet. Um, what they do is they pry open the doors and they'll steal the batteries out of them. And just that alone right there, those batteries are $125 apiece. There's about six batteries in there, so it, it does add up. And, uh, not all cabinets have batteries, um, so they'll pry them open, hoping to find them. Um, so it's caused quite a bit of damage. This other one is the Pluma Street, uh, tower. This is actually, I believe this happened a day before the Christmas stroll. And where they basically got in there, they just destroyed the whole panel and that controlled the lighting on the, the, uh, tower and it was going to affect our Christmas lighting. Um, electrical has taken, uh, steps on Pluma Street. They've, uh, installed tamper-proofed screws into the receptacles. Um, the, the homeless, they just pry those, uh, destroy the covers. So it's a continuous battle and most times when they pry it open, the power's been disconnected upon a breaker farther up the road. Estimate street's cost, um, is $98,000 annually. That is a very conservative number. Uh, special project, the Yuba County, uh, the ponds on the Yuba County side will make the yearly average higher than, uh, in years. For example, $20,000 per week, um, that we spent in the Yuba County, um, on that cleanup. Um, because of, uh, basically we had to send seven of the nine, uh, streets crew down there with our dump trucks and, and backhoes. Uh, estimate, uh, electrical costs, it's about 20,000 annually and that's, that's a conservative number too. Staff, uh, come up some, with some suggestions. Uh, so Eric talked about that beautification crew. We currently, um, for the last couple of years, haven't had a beautification crew. That is a temporary, uh, staff that comes in at that time, a couple of years ago, 24 hours a week. Um, but staff suggests hiring, uh, full-time two-person beautification crew that could assist with our code enforcement officer and our, uh, homeless liaison officer to proactively remove the blight as seen. Uh, schedule regular, uh, citywide cleanup efforts with participants with several divisions and, uh, departments. Um, some more suggestions, uh, hire an additional homeless liaison, uh, liaison officer to assist in moving the transit along before they become established or they dig in. Uh, looking for more, uh, programs, state and federal, such as the conservation crew that the code enforcement, um, offered, um, that they've been working with. Other than that, I don't have any more than that. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Harris?
Uh, thank you very much, um, Scott, for your perspective on that. Um, the impacts seem to be far reaching, more than this most, that's obvious, things like the electrical panels and the, and the, uh, effects once again on our, our residents trying to get the sidewalk repaired in their front yard. So that's, um, definitely something we need to pay attention to and, and be aware of. I would ask that, um, I don't know if it's from your perspective or if this has been brought up to you from your staff, but I would, I would ask that you please communicate to them this workshop and maybe if, if it's being recorded or whatnot, some information because it's easy if someone is affected by one, one issue that they think that, I, we've heard it so much that nobody is doing anything. Well, we learned today that everybody is doing something.
Right.
And we just need to do more of it, but we have, we're doing the best we can with limited resources. We empathize with, with the staff and the impacts in your department and all the departments for sure. And, um, I think the intention today is, is to get something, uh, kind of hit the reset button on everything, get it, get a current, um, status of the resources are available, what the plans are, where we are, and then move forward. So I, I would just ask if there's, uh, to me, that's communicating frustrations and, and I think that, um, they might put a, uh, they might think that they're, we don't have their back, but it's a slow-moving, slow-turning ship and we're, we're doing the best we can. But I appreciate the information and, uh, feel for them and, um, that's about it. But thank you very much.
Councilwoman Spandola?
Okay. I'm good. Thanks, Scott. I know, um, I appreciate getting the recommendations. I think that brings a little bit more clarity to me about those needs, especially coming from those folks that are actually doing the work, so I appreciate that. Just, I, I would like to echo Councilman Harris's, um, you know, there, there are a lot of times when we either hear or read, you know, these guys aren't doing anything, you know? What's the city doing? Well, hopefully, um, through the discussions tonight from you and your colleagues, we are trying to do something. We are actively engaged. We are, um, you know, it's spending money, even though it may be embedded in the budgets, you guys are, are being pulled from normal duties, like you mentioned, to do, to do these other tasks. Um, and, and I'm not here to, to try to, to sanitize anything, but I'm just hopeful that as we continue to have this workshop, hear from folks like you who are hearing from your teams and the other departments, that people come to realize that, um, that the city is, is address, trying to address the issue. And it, you know, unfortunately for us, it continues to grow and we're going to have to be extremely nimble and try to find the resources to, to, to provide the support for the crews that, that are out there, police, fire, public works, parks, um, code enforcement. I don't want to miss anybody here. Um, but anyway, I, more of a, an editorial comment, but again, appreciate the recommendations because that, that helps me keep myself focused on those things that are going to do the best for what we're trying to do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for, for bringing additional information again that I was not aware of. And it's making me think, um, as, as we move along with, um, I think Councilmember Harris said it the best, um, you just sink and really well put together, that, um, our city is really trying, um, to, to do the best that we can within the resources that we have. Um, we work well with partners and we've been doing that for many years. We will continue to do that. I think it's really important. I think that your suggestions, I mean, li- listening to Eric and listening to Troy, to all of you, the suggestions of, here's some options that we think as a city that we can do together internally. And as we move towards this next few weeks, we have budgets. We're reviewing budgets. So the appropriate timing of your recommendations, um, could be considered, uh, additions to the budgets. So that's something that maybe, um, Diana, there's discussion, and we have an ad hoc committee, um, they were just pointed out, um, who will be working with our finance team. Um, the, the matter of building this is that we still, I think, recognize that the problem is not easing up on us. It's growing.
Right.
Um, and so how, how do we prepare for the growth and to not add more pressure points? I think Troy, your comment earlier was saying, if we have an internal team, perhaps the cost of all these things will be reduced and maybe folks can then focus on their jobs. It, just the roundabout number seems to me that's coming through about 10% across the board of our services some way or another, seems to be focused on homeless issues. Not making up that number. Um, so 10% of whatever our whole revenue is in expenses could be considered that's costing us maybe as a city. And so when others are needing services, you know, the reputation of our employees, that, 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 that bothers me, that hurts me because I know how hard your team works. Hard, they, 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 they take pride in their work. Um, and so I hope that the community has a little bit more gentleness towards our, uh, the city employees after this presentation today, when you know that they're trying to do their best within the work that we need to get done. Um, I thank you. Thank you so much for bringing additional information, but it's, it's a budget issue for us to consider as a council. And I hope our ad hoc team will dig deep into those budgets and hopefully find us some additional funding perhaps for, for some of the requests that our city employees are asking us of, of us. Um, that's all I have to say.
Scott, thank you. Um, can't say enough how I appreciate your leadership and the dedication of your team. It is disheartening to, to hear the comments, as it's been said, from the community, but it just shows the impact that goes. So please take back to your team that, um, we really appreciate them and we do see the, the dedication and the hard work that, that they do. And, uh, you know, what I'm seeing starting to happen already is what I was hoping with this workshop and that is the synergies are starting to reveal themselves. And it's, it hasn't been the norm that we've been able to grab everybody and throw us all in one room and start really figuring out. You guys see it every day, but we as the council and the rest of the community don't get to see that every day. But, uh, I just want to tell you all, I really appreciate everything you're doing and helping bring to light how we're dealing and facing this issue as a community. So, uh, and, uh, we're definitely going to take everything that you've shared with us as well as everyone else moving forward. Um, you know, yes, it's part of the budget issue, but this is much, much larger than just a budgetary issue. And, um, so, uh, we will continue trudging forward and hopefully some good synergies will come out of this, so thank you, Scott. You're welcome. Is there any other comments from the council? Okay. With that, uh, Ms. Langley?
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd really like to thank staff for the presentations tonight. The presentations that you saw came from the staff that, uh, presented, that prepared them. Um, this is in their words in terms of what they're experiencing on a daily basis and I think that that's, um, very sincere, very genuine, and it is also a real eye-opener. And I just really appreciate the amount of time and effort that they put into that. Um, secondly, you know, the city's philosophy related to homelessness a few years ago was, we're not in the business of health and human services. It's not what we do. That's, that's the county's function, right? And so over the years, we've gained the reputation of we haven't been that, um, proactive in terms of partnerships and dealing with homelessness. But you can see from tonight's presentations, we're clearly in the business of health and human services. And so I think it's, it's great that council's having these workshops and we're re-engaging with the community in terms of how can we partner and how can we, um, address this issue? And also recognizing that the items that we discussed tonight, these are real-time, short-term, um, you know, reactive issues. And we still haven't, as a community, been able to really get to the long-term just because of so many barriers. And so, um, as, as the mayor mentioned, this is a, this is going to take a lot of time, but, um, I think that you can tell by the staff that we have engaged, that they truly care about this issue. And, um, it's, you know, I'm excited to see these, these next workshops as they come forward. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. You have listened to us for the past, uh, two hours. Um, it is time that if the community has any questions, we will open the mic up to any questions that you might have. Uh, I will, uh, stress two things. Number one, please address all questions, uh, to the council, to me as mayor, and then we will send those where they need to go. And please remember that we are here talking about issues, not departments, not people, not, you know, a group of people. We're talking about the issue that impacts and faces our community. So with that, uh, do we have anyone that has any questions? Please walk to the podium and please, uh, state your name and your address. And I will start since she's getting up. Heather Estman, will you, uh, please go first as you turned in a card?
Sorry, I saw other people get up. Uh, yeah, so this is addressed to the, sorry? It's green.
The other one turns red, then you turn it on to be fair.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll remember that. So, um, thank you. Good evening, esteemed council and interested citizens. My name is Heather Estman and I live on Lincoln Road, just this side of the county border. Homelessness is an issue that is very complex and we all need to work on solutions for our residents, but I wanted to come tonight because this issue hits home for me. Um, and I prepared this in advance. I didn't see the presentations until just this moment, but, um, in my case, I worry about my dad. He's a retired civil servant, having worked a long time at Mary Island on atomic submarines and then later at McClellan on airplanes. When he retired at the time of the base closures in Sacramento, he came to work for Yuba City in the Public Works Department. He wasn't able to earn enough credits to get an additional pension before retirement age, so all he has is his U.S. pension. I'm very proud of my father's service to our country and to the city, and yet his living situation is precarious because he would not be able to afford living on his own if his girlfriend and roommate were to pass before, uh, he does. And I worry about him because, but he doesn't have to worry. He knows he has a place at my home if the need should arise, but not everyone has children with a granny unit that can help their parents. I know that being single myself, I risk the same fate as he when I go to retire or have serious health issues. Uh, I do not want to be homeless. I have family members that have been homeless and I know what it's like and I don't want to go there again. Uh, but with the rents rising as they are, city citizens on disability or social security cannot pay these rents on their meager incomes. Now, the city had the chance just before Christmas to take a big chunk out of those 200 missing low-income units that Ms., I believe it was Mrs. Langley, mentioned earlier this year at one of our meetings. Remember it on the presentation. Uh, I did speak to that at that time. And city staff worked many hours to get a deal for the Bonanza Inn that would have been paid for primarily with state home key grants, uh, and not from diverting funds from other grants, the city needs for other projects or for citi-, from citizen zones taxes. Um, but what happened? Uh, you didn't vote on this and you didn't bring it up again at the January 18th meeting like you said you would. Did you buckle under pressure of a few residents? I was there and I heard their comments, many of which had little to do with the project itself and more with the homeless causing problems in the area. Did you do your due diligence? I drove by the hotel. I looked at the map online. Had you done that, you would have seen that there are no residences that border the hotel. The apartments north of the property have a parking lot that borders one residence. The rest are business offices and the backside of the stores across the street. Now, I know someone who lives next to the hotel that was purchased for Habitat for Humanity using the home key grant just south of the city, and he was against the project in the beginning. However, he was very pleased to say that he was wrong at the time and that the problems that were there prior to the transaction have all but gone. And he's also much happier now that the county stepped in, in and stepped up. Will this solve homelessness? No, but it would have made a huge impact on 130 people's lives, some of which may be homeless right now. I think we owe it to our families, our friends, our neighbors, and yes, even ourselves, to get more low-income housing implemented. And this will have to go in someone's backyard and there will be some that will not like your decisions, but I urge you- your decisions, but I urge you to reach deep down into yourselves, pull out that, that courage to take the tough, to make the tough decisions because that's what you're here for. You've done it in the past and you can do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, the public podium is up there. I'd point that out. And again, I ask to stay on focus tonight with the issue that is before us, which is how the city is interacting with the, the issues that face the city. And, so, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make one comment, and I'm sure you're all very aware of it, the council. I think any solution to, or any solution to this problem, which there's probably not any one solution, but we also have to take into account the Yuba County. And I would like to see them, maybe the fourth meeting or something, have Yuba County involved because it's a transitory problem. And we can talk about it all day long, but if they don't solve it over there, or if we take steps over here, it's just going to continue to go back and forth.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council for recognizing me. I'm sorry I didn't put a card in. Steve Smith, County Administrator for Sutter County. Thanks so much for having this session. It really is enlightening to see all the work that the city is doing. And even I, you know, interact with you so much and still some of it was surprising to me. I know there was a joint, a few years ago, a joint city-county meeting on homelessness that provided some direction to staff. And, you know, since that time, there's been a lot accomplished in the area. And, and I know things aren't looking better on the surface and there, I think there's a variety of reasons for that. But I know we've put together a better way, a camping area that both jurisdictions are able to use, and also the Harmony Village project. And I know the city's open to other housing projects as well. The courts, state or federal, how would I say it, may not make decisions that some people would consider reasonable, such as allowing people, that you have to create housing and allow them to live in it for an unlimited period of time and provide services and meals. And of course, none of us want to get to that situation. I think I really commend the city for all the, the work that you're doing and, and of course, teaming with Sutter County as well. We've accomplished so much, but it is difficult. I agree with Scott, it's tough to hear that people think we're not doing anything when you saw 111 vehicles in one, or whatever it was, 100 and some vehicles. The county had, one camp had 70 vehicles out by Robbins. I mean, it's just ongoing and ongoing. So I know the city is putting forth a great effort. Sutter County, thanks to Diana giving me a heads up, we're applying next week for that Conservation Corps grant, so we'll see what we can do to team on that as well and on any other issues. Also, the governor has introduced a care court model that you're probably aware of, though it's mainly focused on kind of severely mentally ill patients. But regardless, we'll see how that impacts the county and the city and hopefully in a positive way if it's funded adequately by the state. So, thanks so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments from anyone in attendance? Any questions?
Manny Cardoza, resident, city of Yuba City. I'm just going to start, I guess I'll bring it to you and then you can ask later. Start with the police department. Businesses for trespassing, he says they have to redo it every six months. That takes quite a bit of manpower or takes quite a bit of power, manpower and more time. Could that be changed from six months to maybe two years? Save time? That would be one question. And then the issue was never brought up about panhandling in our community. There are dozens upon dozens of homeless panhandling every day, just driving through our community. I mean, just driving down the street, you have Bel Air, you have Target, you have the mall area. I can just go on and on and on and on. They're at the big oak tree at the Sutter Street, North Calusa Frontage, every single day. And I, the police dispatchers, bless their heart, they know me by name, they say, is this Manny? And I say, yeah, it is, but they're very nice, very thoughtful, but it's going to take manpower, it's going to take a lot of manpower in order to take care of this because the officers can't be pulled off doing important things in order to take care of stuff like that. But I just wanted to mention something like that for our police department. The fire department, Chief Alexander, just a suggestion, have you thought about having a little mini pressure washer that you can carry in the back of one of the vehicles where the guys come in, they could pressure wash their boots before they get in the rig? It'd be cost effective and safety, put a little chlorine chemical in it or something, some type of sanitary chemical where it won't contaminate your cab of your fire truck. And let's see, Community Services, Robert, the irrigation boxes that are getting destroyed, plastic irrigation boxes. The wastewater plant has lift stations with vaults that are concrete with metal lids with locks in them. It might cost a little bit more now, but you can see into that, and they do make smaller versions, like the B-36 size, B-16 size that you could check into. It would be metal, concrete, they won't be able to destroy it with a latch with the lock inside where it's going to take a cut and torch in order to get into it, and I don't think the homeless have that. Eric, wonderful work. I supposed to bring this up to you? Our favorite vacant piece of land across the street from Garden Highway and Miles. The homeless are camped out there, they're there every day. They got a tent in the far back right-hand corner, there's several there, and they're probably got a fire and eating dinner right now. They've been doing that lately. I just wanted to mention that to you. Scott, everything you do, all we can ask is for more manpower for you. I know you're trying and it's manpower and money, so that's about the only suggestion I can say for council on your budget this year. You said you have an extra couple million dollars, you might want to spend some of that for manpower in order to help our city and make it a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Officer Kosky, would the only, there was two questions, they were directed to PD. Would you like to respond to those?
As far as the paid handling, I know when the city adopted that ordinance, they wrote it to be, try to be very specific. The unfortunate part is that that hand handling goes hand in hand with the First Amendment right. So we've been very careful with that. There are certain areas that I don't have any tolerance for, like the base of the number 10. Most of the time I'll go along and just ask the folks to leave, as with mostly officers. We want to be very careful that we don't get ourselves in jeopardy where there's a lawsuit because we violated someone's First Amendment rights. But again, I think when the city council wrote that, they worded it in a way that we would be okay, but we just, I'm worried about taking that risk. The other question about the trespassing forms, there's a little bit of legality there. Some departments went out to a year. We didn't want to go that far because we wanted to still make sure that we were on the pulse of the business owner and if they wanted to change their mind. We do have VIPS that are actually going out and making those contacts. Most of them are email, trying to update that as, as easily as possible. And then Percy and Garden, that was cleaned up last week by the, the crews. It's an ongoing thing, it's, they rehabilitate. It's, it's one of our properties that we struggle with, it's a vacant lot and they just continue to, to get back in there.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other ques, any other questions from the public?
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Johnny Burke with the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium. Not a Yuba City resident, but it's my second favorite city next to Marysville, just so you know. And obviously, we represent both. Just here, obviously, because homeless issues are what we do and looking for funding and collaboration on projects. Just something I wanted to mention real quick, with a lot of the discussion, I noticed when the presentations were made about the increase in service calls seemed to go up over the last three years from seven to eight to nine percent, probably looking at 10%. I think that corresponds a lot directly with a lot of the abatement efforts that have been going on by, by both cities and both counties. A couple of years ago is when a lot of the big camp abeyments started happening. COVID slowed down a lot of that, but the major encampments and just a couple of years ago, and Saylove was a huge part of this, Second Street was just a, a great place for people to stay. And that's, it's a beautiful street now, as beautiful as it can be, right? But those folks had to go somewhere and same thing from Boat Ramp going south. And all those big camps have been cleaned up. Yuba County side, it's the same deal, Hollywood's been cleaned up, the, all the different major camps. And that's brought people in the cities. I, I agree with Officer Kosky that the, the river homeless and the city homeless are two different groups, but a lot of the river homeless have come into the cities now because they've been pushed out of the big camps. And so I do think that even though it's become a more visible issue, that it's, it's due to some amazing efforts by law enforcement, code enforcement, working to abate some of these huge camps that we used to have. So it does look a little disheartening from a city perspective. You see a lot more visible things, especially on Calusa Highway. Although looking at the map, if you just get rid of the two highways in Yuba City, you won't have any problems if anyone noticed that, just, that'll take care of it right there. But all joking aside, we're here to help and so if, if any of the council members need my cell number or email, love to meet with any of you personally if you have any questions. Looking forward to the next few meetings. So, thank you very much for all your time. Thank you for staff and all your presentations as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public?
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. You should read, somebody say green, time to make sure. Thank you, everyone, for this workshop and I appreciate listening to it all and I've been involved because of Saylove. I started getting involved with my husband and Jeff.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Medicaboli. And I am, I am a resident of Yuba City and I appreciate you getting the people out of the Greenwood Park. I do go there often. But my, my questions and my concerns, I know I have three minutes, I got to get through this. I know we keep people on a short leash too at our meetings. I'm a board member too, by the way. I had a question on the housing project. You may have spoke about it at the Harmony, on Garden Highway. There is, I want people to know, there is a new division coming in and I did learn about it, that there's a new housing and it's going to be affordable housing for people. And I really hope the permits and stuff can go through quickly for that and that they can get that going because that's really going to be helpful for our community to be able to have those rents at 300, you know, 200, 400, whatever, because it's going to be low enough that we can get some of these people off the streets, like we say, you know, we don't have any place for them to go once we get them out of these places. I really hope that the city can work with the county because I know the county has the mental health building, they have the mental health services. I know it's always been smaller, it's always hasn't had the availability of the beds and stuff. So I hope that we can work together with the county on that to make it, so when they go out and they're ready to go into someplace, mental health can take them. I know there's not a lot of room there, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to get that together and make it better so they can get these people off and make it helpful. I just want to mention the skate park, we talked about that, and that there is a lot of problem with the homeless. It always has been a lot of problem at San Brennan and I appreciate so much that you guys are doing that and that you're having to do that. I know it's always been a mess and because you have the bigger bathrooms there, you have more problems there and, and I get it. And I've been there when there's been issues. I have to say, the skate park is still a lot of control back there because I was there with my daughter and grandkids playing pickleball and I wanted to take them off of there because what was going on at the skate park. So it's still a little wide and I know that they're still doing drug deals in that park at night. So that's still an issue, but I know you're working on it and I appreciate everyone's help here. I mean, you guys are all doing a great job. Another thing, as being a board member of Yuba City Unified, the one issue that we have that, that you guys have all been talking about is we're having the same issue with our schools, with our, our fields being open for the, for the public to use. They're using behind the, behind the stadium. They're ruining our fields there. And, you know, we have our, our janitorial staff that has to go out first thing in the morning before the kids arrive to make sure we get the needles picked up, we get the beer bottles picked up, we get the whiskey bottles picked up before those kids come onto campus. So we understand, we're there with you, we want to, we want to work with you guys. I want you guys to know that I loved hearing all the things we're doing because it kind of goes in with what we're trying to do too and trying to keep our schools clean and healthy for our kids as well. And, and I hope that while you're out there, you're helping some of those kids that are with those families. I, I always hear about the one man that has the big stuff, but being in education, I also know there's a lot of families out there with kids that are homeless too. And I just wonder what's happening with them and how we can get them services so they're not out there all the time. So that was my, done? I won't say anymore, but anyway, I'll stick to you three minutes. We keep everybody to three minutes.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything that everybody's doing and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Then we will move to online. Is there any comments online?
So at this point, we have four comments that have come in via Zoom. The first is from Pamela Langen. Her question is, would partnering with mental health on the law enforcement calls reach a faster healing resolution to the individual? Second comment is from Ronald Eberhart. With the recent blockage of Habitat for Humanity purchase of the Bonanza Inn after similar projects by Habitat have been successful in the Yuba and Sutter Counties, what is the city's plan for not just moving the homeless, but assisting especially the elderly in finding a housing solution? Next comment comes from Matthew Flo. Remember that detox is needed for the substances you are talking about. Have you thought about who can provide medical detox services? And last comment is from Rita Collins. She has a statement regarding enforcement. She says, it would seem to, we would need to have some good consequences where someone would need community service to clean up. However, I would recommend not placing these people with the volunteers that come out to Saylove. Thank you for your presentations and all your work. Also seems we need to get money to increase drug and alcohol treatment placement.
Thank you. That's the last comments online. All right, with that, we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council. I'll just address a couple of these that were mentioned in those. Many of these issues that were brought up, such as the mental health and the detox and the drug abuse, stuff like that, those will become points of topics for a different meeting as we begin to hold a joint meeting with the county who has the Health and Human Services and such as that, because that's, that's the structure of this, is to find out how we're interacting, then get with the county, figure out where we have all the synergies and then begin to build out from that. And then remind people as far as the Bonanza, that ship sailed two months ago, we've heard a couple of comments. We are working with Habitat on other things and just stay tuned because trust me, this council is very much involved in, in taking care of things and making sure that there is housing. So, but that again is not a topic for tonight. So with that, I'm going to go to closing remarks and we'll start with Councilwoman Espendola first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentations and the hard work that was put into tonight and thank you for the public for being here tonight and, and your input. And Heather, thank you for sharing that personal story and helping us understand the greater need for low-income housing as related to homelessness. There is a correlation to it, sometimes it gets lost in the conversations, but it is part of, part of the issue. I, I don't want to take up more time because I think that we really just need to progress with the work and work better together in the partnerships. But at the same time, I think it's important for our city, the work that is identifying where the hotspots, we understand where the areas are at, we understand the work that needs to be done, we understand the partnerships that we have. It's really about being more strategic in how we address these issues here forward because this is growing. Homelessness is growing. And it's an unfortunate situation. And I would love to see our city stay a beautiful city, a clean city, an affordable housing city and a city that stays out of the federal and state courts because that's happened in Chico, as you can see for the results of decisions of leaders at that time and, and those things were causing many issues for the city of, of Chico now. And I, I can't say further than what Diana, our city manager, has said. I think that she said it well. I will continue working along. those things were causing many issues for the city of Chico now. And I can't say further than what Diana, our city manager, has said. I think that she said it well. I will continue working along with my colleagues, continue working with the consortium closely, and the community. We need your support, the community. We need you. We need the business owners in this subject to help us solve this issue. This issue can't just be taken care of by us as government. And we do need public health with mental health and treatment. It's, 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 the services are a shortage. They're not there. And as much as we can try to fix folks and help them, if the services aren't there, we end up exactly where we just started in this presentation.
Also, Member Harris.
All right, sure. I want to thank everybody who prepared the presentations tonight. I think they were really well done and put together, and I learned something from each and every one of you, and I appreciate that. I will leave here tonight encouraged about what lies in front of all of us as a community. And Jeff, thank you for the comment to wrap in Yuba County as well. That's very important. I'm looking forward to meeting with our friends at Sutter County, and to continue to work with city staff and my colleagues up here to really get some solutions together, and not just put money into maintaining a status quo. But let's do, figure out what we can do, what our part is to get to the root causes. There is many root causes of homelessness as there is homeless people. And so it's not, it's not an easy fix. Many reasons. Everybody has a story out there. And so if we can maybe do our part to address that as best as we can, that would be really good. I also will leave with recommending, and if I could make all of you do it, I would. And that is, I really recommend going right along with our resident professional over here, Mr. Kowski. I went out for a couple, three hours the other day, and immediately, immediately began learning stuff about what's going on, and sometimes right under our nose, because some of the stuff is so inconspicuous. But when you go with him and he pays attention, he knows all these people, and you see things, and what the plans are, and the network that he has. And it's wonderful. It's, they're doing a lot of good things, and we have a lot of potential there. So I would highly recommend would consider doing that. Thank you.
Also, Member Boon Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a few things. Thank you for the presentations and the participation. I know there's a lot of community partners here tonight, too. We didn't do a lot of talking about their role in dealing, especially with things like cleanup, or dealing directly with, with those folks who find themselves challenged with having a house over their head. My takeaways, SRCC team going away, that's a big deal. I appreciate you raising that issue tonight. I don't know that I was fully aware of that. And kudos to the county if they can get the grant, if that happens as well. Mr. Smith, thank you, and Supervisor Baines. I think the relationship between the county and the city continues to blossom when it comes to trying to tackle these things in a more collaborative way. That's not to say that it was bad before, but I know that pretty laser focused right now on trying to deal with this particular issue. And that whether it's law enforcement, or fire, or city staff and county staff, things are going in the right direction. And also, Mr. Smith, you're a heck of a button monitor. Thank you for, I appreciate that. Mr. Stevens, echo Councilman Harris, great idea to bring Yuba County, because you're entirely right. I've seen it for too long. Push over here, ends up with a problem over there. So yeah, we need to, we need to rope them. In Richland Village, I think that was a question about some housing. That hasn't been fully funded yet. Diana, a couple of seconds on that one, if you don't mind, just so people understand.
Right. So they're still waiting to get, see what their tax credit amount is going to be. And in the current construction market, we're anticipating that there's going to be a little bit of a shortfall, but we're going to know more about that in the June, July timeframe. And then at that point in time, we would bring Mr. Becerra before council to discuss that shortfall and how to fund it. So more to come within about three months or so. We'll have a better idea of what, how much they're going to be funded.
Thank you. Homeless liaison officer, I understand and I'm very well versed in why that's not happening, but I think that's something that we heard loud and clear from multiple departments, that we need to try to figure a solution to. Homeless court, Councilwoman Esmondola brought that up. Yep, we've talked about that for a bit. It's time to, to execute, right? That one's, has a lot of promise. Ordinances, that's an easy, that's, well, I don't want to say, nothing's easy, but ordinances, I think that's something that's low-hanging fruit, really. And maybe we can, we can get after that a bit. I want to talk a little bit about the housing piece, just briefly, because it does lead to people not having a home. And I think one thing we need to focus on is keep the teetering from, from teetering. And by that, what I mean is there's those folks that, for whatever reason, I'll use baseball analogy, because that's how I think at this time of year, is that people, you know, people get thrown a curve ball or a knuckleball, and all of a sudden, they find themselves in harm's way. And by that, I mean they're sleeping in a car, or they're looking at, you know, sleeping on somebody's couch. And I think our money is, is well spent trying to keep those people in a safe situation, rather than going out and spending $375,000 a unit, you know, which is sort of the going rate right now for some of this assisted living stuff. So it's just something to keep in the back of our minds strategically as we move along. We've spent, as a city, this is just a fact here, factoid coming from us, anyway, we've spent over $3 million over the last few years, not including the embedded staff time, on issues dealing with finding affordable housing or pushing, putting people in houses. You know, in, when you think about it, $3 million seems like a lot of money, but it's not. But it goes back to a comment, I think, the city manager made is, is that I, you know, at the time that we took seats up here, anyway, I do believe that there was a belief that, you know, this was not a city problem. But I think that after tonight, knowing that we have committed and what we will be continuing to commit for housing, affordable housing and homelessness is important. And a couple, last couple things here. Number one, understand home key is a hot issue, not going to get into the deals with that. We are on the front side now, this council is, dealing with, with those folks who are doing a home key to application. A reason that's happening is because I think we both learned from each other, we needed to know a lot more about what was going on. And so that, we're engaged with that. We're also very encouraged about Home Key 3, and what looks to be an over a billion dollars worth of more money that may become available to us. My final comment is, we had a very good meeting with Chris Champlin, who is the president of Adventist Ride Out. And the discussion came up with the, how many people in here have always wondered what the heck's going to happen to that tower? Okay? We had a good discussion about that. So let me give you a couple of facts, and then I'll let you, I'll let it go. The north side has definitely got some code enforcement, or code, building code issues. The tower does not, okay? And Adventist is going to be, continue to be engaged with, with the city, with us, and discussion about certain options that may become available. It's their property, it's their decision, but they have absolutely committed a willingness to work with this city council to see if there's something that we can do. Some of these things that are going to be discussed need to come from them, because they're the owners of the property. But I am entirely encouraged by our ability to work with them to at least take a look at things that might address some issues, and rather not have that piece of prime real estate in the middle of our city, you know, continue to stand empty. So if you have a question about Adventist and the tower, trust me, they are interested and they are participatory. So with that, thank you. Thank you, guys and gals, for coming. And that's it.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So how do I follow that? Wow. First of all, I'd like to thank city staff for all the hard work that they've done with this presentation. And it's, it's a long day for you folks, and I appreciate your patience in attending this. Mr. Stevens, third charm, third time's a charm. I think you hit it on the head. I think Yuba County needs to be included in this conversation. So thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Burke, yes, I agree that with the, you know, the breakup of the camps, folks are more visible now. So I think that was a great observation, and I agree. This is one of those meetings I wish the whole community could have been on. And hopefully, we'll, we'll watch from the, from the, the comment about what it does to city employees, the, the perception that, you know, why aren't you guys doing anything? And well, there's a reason. We're, we're busy, distracted with other, other things. So thank you for that. We've seen other cities that get behind it, or let this get out of the way, and what happens. And we certainly don't want that to happen to our community. Having been born and raised here, it's hard for me to ride my bike on these levees, and it's, it's hard for me to process that. And for folks that have left and come back, that's what I'm asking. I'm like, what, what, what happened? And so I'm glad that this, this, this council and our partners are being proactive on this. If you are an elected official, one of the first questions, what are you doing about this? If not the biggest question. So what I'll leave this, this meeting with is, I'll leave being better informed. So thank you.
Right. Thank you. This has been a really good meeting, I think, with a lot of really good information. And this is not where the conversation ends, but this is really just the beginning of a long journey. Jeff, thank you. I think our three meetings are going to go to four or five. And, but that's a good outcome from this. You know, I'm sitting here tonight, right exactly where I started this evening. What are you doing about the homeless? What are you doing about the homeless? And we've heard all of that through tonight, and we have found out there's a lot being done. And this is not a city problem. It is not a county problem. It is not a state problem or a national problem. This is a community problem. And it takes all of us. And that's what this journey is intended to be. Never in my wildest dreams that I think when the former mayor was prepping me to become the next mayor, that I would think, okay, this will be one of the top priorities that we're going to tackle, you know, coming out of a pandemic. But I think this is the right time, and we got all the right people in the right places. And I'm looking forward to our next meeting with Sutter County, because I'm looking forward to hearing about everything that you're doing, which you're doing some wonderful things, and figuring out how it marries up to what we're doing. Because again, we got to find those synergies. We've heard the recommendations. We already see how different departments are overlapping and working together. And there's already the relationship with the county on many things, because we, you know, while we're saying we're not in the Health and Human Services business, we really are, as we talked earlier. You kind of have dual roles there, both of you gentlemen do. Looking forward to, see how we figure this out. You know, there's, as we go through these meetings, there's no prescribed specific outcome, that we're going to come in here tonight, and we're going to decide, we're going to invest in more housing, we're going to invest in more personnel, we're going to invest in more equipment. This is a discovery process, to find out with all of our department heads, which I am extremely proud of you guys tonight. Pardon the French, but you guys did a hell of a job. Because when we started this, I asked, just give us the real, what's going on? Because so oftentimes, we sit back and we soften it, and we pretend. And tonight, you guys gave us the view we needed to, so that we can really get real as a community. So thank you. You guys did excellent. Now, it's our jobs to partner up with the county, and let's figure out where that synergy's at. And then as we figure that out, then we'll get all the third parties together, and we'll figure out how this whole thing works, because we've already discovered that it's not just about housing. And as Sean said, you know, homelessness is not a crime, you know? This is about helping people, and at the core of it, we have got mental health issues, and we've got substance abuse issues. And at the end of the day, if we don't start addressing those, as we're trying to get them shelter, all we end up with is hurting people that are still inside of now a different box. We call it a house. But we still got hurting people. And so the whole idea behind where we're going is to collectively come together, get the people that need help and want help, help as quickly as possible. And then find a way and the courage to get those that need help, that won't ask for it, help. Because that's the only way we're going to make our community really thrive. And do those things that, you know, Adventist Health talks about, and, you know, their mission and stuff, and, you know, about, you know, they want people to thrive, and they want people to excel and everything. So we're just like that, you know? They've got the blue zones. We want people to be healthy all the way around, you know? It's, that's where we're heading. And I couldn't be more thrilled tonight than knowing that we took the time to have that real conversation. So this is the start of a journey. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. And again, department heads, staff, you guys, you guys brought it tonight, and I really do appreciate it. Ms. Langley, thank you. Thank you for leading our team internally and, you know, bringing it tonight. I really do appreciate it. We will get back with you when the next meeting is, because we will be scheduling that with, with Steve and the county. And then I look forward to it. I'm hoping that it's not a long duration. It'd be nice if we could do these about once every four to six weeks or so, to kind of give us time to digest what we've learned tonight, come together, digest that, and then come together again. And we will figure out when it's appropriate to get our partners across the river together. I would actually encourage them, as we send messages back, maybe they can start the same process on their side, and make it easier so we can basically have the east side and the west side of the Feather River come together and already be prepared. So with that, again, thank you. It's been three hours and seven minutes. We will stand adjourned.